Good evening. It is 6:00 PM. It is the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for the Town of Spencer. This is December the 14th. And I officially call the meeting to order this evening. We will move to our invocation, and Alderwoman Pat Sledge will be giving our invocation.
Creator of all things, hear my prayer. Thank you for this beautiful day, for bringing us safely to this place, for the people of Spencer, who have placed their... As we begin a new cycle of leadership for our town, give us God and wisdom to do our best. If I am to stand up, help me to stand bravely. If I am to sit still, help me to sit quietly. If I am to lie low, help me to do it patiently. If I am to do nothing, help me to do it gallantly. Make these words more than words, and give me the spirit of your love. In my prayer...
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the quiet and nice face of America, to the republic which is standing, a nation of God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first order of business tonight is to approve our minutes from our November 4th pre-agenda meeting and our November 9th regular meeting. And so with that, are there any edits to those minutes at this time that are requested by the Board? And if not, do I hear a motion to approve?
I need to approve the minutes of the November 4th meeting.
All right. Thank you. There's a motion by Ms. Sledge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bish. Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Those are approved. All right. And at this time, we will move forward to the organization and procedure of Mayor and the Board of Aldermen. And with that, we will move to the oath of office administered to the Mayor and members of the Board of Aldermen. We have several incoming Board members. And so with that, we need to recess in order to be able to read those. So is there a motion to this?
I so move.
Motion by Mr. Morgan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller. All in favor? Opposed? All right. We stand in recess. So I'd like to take a moment to recognize two of our outgoing Board members for their service. To Alderwoman Sharon Hovis, for her past four years of service. We are very, very grateful for all that she has done for the Town of Spencer and for her service. And then to Mr. Bob Bish, for his past two years of service as well. I speak for the Board when I say it's been a pleasure serving with these individuals. We appreciate all that they have brought to this Board, the unique perspectives, the service that they have put forward, and the time that they have invested in our town and our citizens. Thank you very, very much. I know unfortunately, Ms. Hovis cannot be with us tonight, but Mr. Bish, we would like to recognize you both, and we have a token of our appreciation that we would like to share with you.
For me.
All right. And for those of you that maybe aren't aware, this gift that we've given is a copy of artwork at the back of our new Town Hall boardroom. And it was actually done by students in the North Carolina area schools of our Board members and town staff. And we are just appreciative for the collaboration that we have with our local schools. And again, Mr. Bish, thank you very, very much. You will be deeply missed, but I am confident we can see you in the back.
Oh yeah.
Very good. All right. With that, I would like to ask our incoming Board members to please come forward. And also Judge Marshall Bickett, he will be administering the oath of office this evening to Mr. Rashid Muhammad and Mr. Andrew. So what we will do, we will swear our new incoming members in.
Fight.
Come on in here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We recognized our outgoing Board members, and now we'd like to give our new incoming Board members a round of applause. All right. And with that, your first act as a new Board is to establish the time and place for our regular meetings in 2022.
We need to go back into session.
Do need to. So is there a motion now? Come back into session from recess.
I so move.
All right. There's a motion by Mr. Morgan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller. All in favor? Opposed? All right. We are back in session now. And so with that, we will move forward. Item 4B, we are establishing time and place for the Board's regular meetings in 2022. For the Board, that is attachment two in your agenda. So with that, historically, over the past year, our pre-agenda meetings have been held on the Thursday prior to the regular meeting at 5:30 PM. And our regular meetings historically in 2021 started at 6:00 PM on the second Tuesday of each. So you will see before you the dates for the next 12 months for pre-agenda and regular meeting. Are there any questions on that? Hearing none? Is there a motion to approve those meeting dates and times? And the location would be here at our new...
I move to approve.
All right. So a motion by Mr. Morgan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Muhammad. All in favor? Opposed? That is approved. All right. The next item is to elect the Mayor Pro Tem for the next two-year term for 2022 and 2023, historically in the Town of Spencer. Yes, Mr.?
I'd like to nominate Patty Seacrest, that she was top vote getter, the Office of Mayor Pro Tem for the Town of Spencer.
All right. So there is a motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
There is a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? All those opposed? And congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Seacrest.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is additions or deletions to the agenda. And with that, I do believe that there is a request from the Planning Department to move item 10, which is consideration of the rezoning. To move that after the appointments for our appointed boards. So that would be taking item 10 down to just after item 4. Are there any other addition adjustments for delete? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion for the agenda.
All right. There's a motion by Mr. Howe.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Morgan. All in favor? Right. All opposed. Our agenda is set. All right. And with that, we will move forward. We have several appointments. Our Board, in addition to our service on the Town Board, we have several other commitments to outside organizations that we are members of. The first is the North Carolina Department of Transportation Metropolitan Planning Organization, also known as the MPO. And then the Technical Advisory Committee and TCC representatives for the MPO. And so traditionally, the MPO representative is an elected official on the Board. And then we also have a staff representative as part of the TAC, TCC representation. Mr. Franzese, anything you want to add on that?
Well, the EAC, the technical advisor, technical coordinator.
And historically, Mr. Taylor has filled that role for the Town for the staff role, correct?
Currently, the TCC member Joel Taylor, Director of Supervising.
Okay. And for the TAC, the primary representative had been Alderwoman Hovis. And the alternate?
Anyone?
I believe you were the alternate, weren't you? Yes. Okay. So with that, we will need to consider those. So I guess the question after the Board, is there an interest in being part of Metropolitan Planning Organization as the Town Representative? And if you have a question about what the MPO does, they're basically responsible for transportation planning throughout the metropolitan Charlotte region. So it's coordinating, basically it's Rowan Cabarrus Metropolitan Planning Organization. So things like public transit, highway, federal monies that are spent for highways, as well as local monies. This is kind of a planning organization that coordinates those various projects. This is our opportunity as a town, have a voice on that Board.
When do they meet? How often?
Typically, it's quarterly is my understanding, right, Peter?
Yes.
Meetings are typically inconcoerced.
Mayor, I'll be interested.
Okay. Mr. Miller? Interested? We have an interest in alternate.
I would be interested in the alternate.
Okay. All right. Very good. And so with that, there will be plenty of other opportunities for other things that could have fallen. Well, we'll talk about that coming out of our planning for 2022. Okay? So with that, is there a motion for the TAC representatives to appoint Alderman Miller and Alderman Howe as primary and alternate representatives respectively?
I so.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second? Second by Alderwoman Muhammad. All in favor? Right. All opposed? Free. All right. And then for the TCC representatives, is there a motion to approve Joel Taylor as the staff primary liaison, and Peter Franzese as the alternate? All right. Motion by Mr. Muhammad. Second.
Second.
Second. Give it to Ms. Sledge. All in favor? All opposed? And that is approved. All right. Thank you. The next is our representation to the Centralina Council of Governments, or Centralina Regional Council. And that is each of the counties and municipalities within the kind of greater Charlotte metropolitan area. And this is our opportunity to, as a town, kind of shape our vision and priorities with the COG. They advocate for municipalities and counties within this region in a variety of different ways and a lot of different initiatives that they have, from planning for regional growth. They also do some work with transportation and connectivity planning. They focus on housing needs throughout the region and a host of things. I have currently, during the past term, served as the primary representative to that. And Ms. Sledge has served as the alternate to that. I am more than happy to allow somebody else to step into that role and serve if they are interested in it. But I'm also happy to continue serving in that capacity as well. Don't speak up. Okay. So you're willing to serve as primary representative? Wonderful. Okay. Anybody interested in serving as the... All right. Mr. Muhammad is interested in serving as alternate. That is fantastic. I will be happy to attend whenever you would like, but I think that's great that we can have have y'all be the representatives. Okay. So is there a motion to approve Ms. Sledge as the primary and Mr. Muhammad as the alternate to the Centralina COG?
Motion. Motion by them.
Motion by Mr. Miller. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Howe. All in favor? All right. All opposed? All right. That is approved. All right. Thank you for that. The next item on the agenda are some recognitions that we would like to make. And the first, we would like to recognize those individuals that were responsible for organizing our Winterfest event. Hopefully, you had an opportunity to participate in that. If you didn't, hopefully it'll be back next year and you'll have a chance to do that. But I'll turn it over to Alderman Morgan for a recognition of the Winterfest organizers.
We began planning this thing that came to pass over the past two weekends back in the late spring or early summer. And there were a core of individuals who began the planning and went out and searched for sponsorships and also did the bulk of the work. In addition to Joel Taylor and his crew and Michael Lanning, I would like to recognize the following women. If it were not for them, this event would not have been possible. My thanks go out to Corinne Malden, Sherri Morgan, Sherri Brown, Lauren West, Kim Lentz, and Beth Nance. I think those ladies deserve not only a tip of a hat, but special recognition. And I think something is being planned for our next Board meeting in January to recognize those individuals as well as the others that worked on the committee. So thank you again from the bottom of my heart. It was our hope that this would create a spark within the citizenry of Spencer and bring back some pride and some camaraderie. So thank you to these women and thank you for the... Again, to Joel Taylor and his group and Michael Lanning as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. And as he mentioned, we will do a more formal recognition and celebration of their work at our January meeting. All right. The next is our Senior Citizen Club for the Town of Spencer. So with that, I will turn that over to, I believe, Mr. Miller, correct?
Yes, sir. I'd like to say a special thank you to the Spencer Senior Citizens Club for sponsoring this year's Senior Citizens Christmas Party at Oakdale Baptist Church last Tuesday. Over 80 senior citizens from the Town of Spencer enjoyed a delicious meal catered by Marlowe's. Special thanks should be given to Terry and Sue Schultz, all the volunteers from Oakdale Baptist Church, and Reverend Thomas from the Crosslife Church. Thanks for the Town for their sponsorship in the meal. We even had a special guest, our Town Manager, Mr. Franzese, made an appearance, and I'm glad he did. But it was a well-attended meal, and it was done very safely with everybody wearing masks. The next senior citizen meal is being planned in May. Invite all our senior citizens to come out. Again, thanks to all the volunteers and Oakdale Baptist.
All right.
And I must add that I was very impressed by the singing that happened at that. And we got a song sheet with about 37 carols on it, and we sang 32 of them.
So if you were impressed...
Are you going to sing now?
No, a wreath will fall down from somewhere if we try.
I was going to say, if you were impressed by it, Mr. Miller must not have sung. All right. Very good. Thank you. The next is recognition of our town staff. And Mr. Miller, I believe you're going to do that as well?
Okay.
Or not. Sorry. Did I have that wrong?
I think Pat was going to do that.
That is... Okay. Thank you.
I particularly wanted to say a special thank you to the members of the Town Staff who worked so hard on the other things that they do for our community. But Sky Allen, who is our intern.
Lead for North Carolina fellow.
Lead for North Carolina. Had a large part in helping... Stacy Craven also worked very hard to get things together for this event. All the public works people just went of and beyond. I would thank Joel Taylor and his crew for that. Without the help of these individuals and the other town staff who were involved, the event would not have been nearly as successful as it was. So thank you all very much. And as a special thanks too, Steve Miller and Linda jumped in and did a lot of work to help Patty Seacrest and myself do some, get some volunteers together. And every time I turned around, I saw Steve and Linda working. And I wanted to say special thank you to them.
Thank you very much. There is a lot of work that's gone into the event over the past months and especially the last several weeks. And so a big thank you to everyone for a very, very successful event and something that I hope becomes an annual tradition now. Right? Are there any other recognitions from the Board at this time? I have a few. All right. Well, we would like to make a few recognitions for employee service recognitions. This is something that we have not done in a while, but we would like to formally recognize all of our staff members that have five years of service with the Town or more. And so at this time, I'm going to read those off. If any of them are here in attendance tonight, please feel free to come up. And I'd like to present you with a token of our appreciation. What I will say is being a public servant in a small municipality is not an easy job. It never has been, but especially in this... It never has been, but especially in this day and age, it is not easy. And I will say it is, it is a thankless job, but we do want to try and say thank you as best we can for the service that they provide, the service to our citizens and the dedication that they have. You know, and I would put our town staff up against any town staff anywhere around. So we're so appreciative for the work that each of you do. And so with that, we'd like to recognize Susan Moore with our Police Department for five years of service. We would like to recognize Beverly McCraw with our Library for five years of service. Come on up, Beverly.
It's actually five and a half, almost six.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Glory be to you. Watch out, crawl back another.
Yeah, we definitely want to emphasize the Library, the event that's happening next week. If you're able to stop by, please do.
Carl, what if we just throw in?
Send him, come on in.
Thank you, Ms. McCraw. All right, the next recognition, we'd like to recognize Mr. Eddie Smith for six years of service to the town with our Public Works Department. He is not able to be here with us. Graylin Watson for six years of service, not here as well. Fire Chief Michael Lanning for seven years of service to the town. Tom Plausser, heaven. All right, the next is Sergeant Brian Leonard with our Police Department for seven years of service. I will say Officer Leonard has been very, very busy here lately, as all of our Police Department has. All right, Mr. Joel Taylor with our Public Works Department for 11 years of service. I'll just say Winterfest would not have happened without our Public Works Department and all that they did to help us set up. So, thank you. Mr. John Reap, who is our SRO at the middle school, for 12 years of service. Samuel Moore for 15 years of service. Now we're getting into the big numbers. Officer Wayne Comer with 22 years of service to the town of Spencer. To Mr. Donald Sales with our Fire Department for 22 years of service. And to Mr. Terry Smith for 27 years of service. All right, a big thank you to all of our town staff and a huge thank you to those of our newer staff that have been here for less than five years. We hope that you'll stick around for five, 10, 20, or even 27 years. So, thanks for all you do, we really, really do appreciate it. All right, with that, we will move forward to our public comment section of our agenda. As a reminder with public comment, when you do come forward, we'll invite one person at a time to come forward. You'll have three minutes to speak and if you'll state your name and address for the record as you come forward.
Patsy Duncan, 804 Fourth Street, Spencer. Mayor, first I would like to thank Peter and James for taking the time to allow us to discuss some of the code enforcement problems and the amount of time it took. Correctly, we did not agree on a lot of things, but we had a good discussion with them. The one thing we did agree on was it costs money to upgrade houses. But it does not cost any money to, but it costs no money to keep trash out of your yard, mow it, rake it, or sweep it, and keep anything that is not outside furniture and junk off of your front porch. Sylvia and I would like to know why we need two planners. We feel what we really need is a land manager. We have acquired more land, houses are going up all over town. We need a land manager to oversee our property. In our opinion, James is overwhelmed and rightly so. He needs a part-time code enforcer who can ride the streets of Spencer and together with James, make it a much cleaner place for us to live. He definitely does not need to be under the chief of police, in our opinion. Our chief needs to concentrate on protecting our town, not cleaning up messes that people make on their property. The chief has enough to do without adding code enforcement. His job is protecting the citizens of our town, not telling them to mow their yards. We encourage you to hire a land manager and part-time code enforcer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. All right, are there others wishing to speak for public comment this evening?
Good evening, Board and Mayor. My name is Sylvia Chilcot and I live at 804 Fourth Street here in Spencer. I would like to say that I agree with and totally support my wife with everything she expressed in her presentation tonight to the Board. And I'd also like to make one point, other point about code enforcement and the lack of cleanliness and the number of unkept properties in the town of Spencer. Conditions have declined dramatically ever since the decision was made by the town to stop sending certified letters to landlords and property owners informing them of existing code violations and allowing 10 days for correction of the violation or to appeal the violation. This was a more expedient process to correct code violations, just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there others wishing to speak this evening? All right, seeing none, do we have any written or emailed correspondence for public comment? Okay.
Other than the mayor, we talked about the one.
Correct, we received some correspondence today, is that correct? Mr. Harris, are you prepared to read them? I think it's appropriate. It's in as public comment, I think it's appropriate to read it for public comment.
Read it now?
Yes.
Okay. All right, good evening. We do have an item later on the agenda, which is the conditional rezoning case number CZ 21-001. But I did receive an additional public comment after the legislative hearing that took place last Thursday, and I am being asked to read it for the record. All right, so again, we did have an extensive public input process as part of this rezoning. We held a neighborhood meeting, a planning board hearing, and a legislative hearing last week. This is the final public comment that we've received. It was submitted after the deadline to, for the legislative hearing, but I will be happy to go ahead and read it out loud now. This statement is from Angela Elkins of South Iredale Avenue. She reads, "I would like this email to suffice as my comments regarding the utilization of the property at 200 South Salisbury Avenue in Spencer, North Carolina. As I had mentioned to you during our phone conversation, I have had several concerns regarding the business that has set up shop at the property. These concern the overall visual aspect of the property as business has transpired, as well as more pressing safety concerns. Since opening for business, I have noticed that the front, back, and both sides of the property have often been completely filled with vehicles. There have been vehicles on trailers as well, all in varying states of disrepair. Some vehicles appear to have been placed for sale or for show in some instances. In short, it quite often looks like a junkyard. Individual homes within the town and especially the historic district would no doubt be cited for similar violations. This business being on a prominent corner of the main town thoroughfare and with the current state of operations does not present a positive curb appeal, in my opinion. More pressing than looks is the issue of safety. Two items are of concern. The excessive number of cars on the property often block visual line of sight when leaving Second Street and entering South Salisbury Avenue. The second item is the most concerning issue, which is vehicles that are parked on the property side of Second Street. On many, many occasions, these are large pickup trucks with attached trailers. Navigating around these vehicles in order to make turns onto South Salisbury Avenue require the driver to physically be partially or even fully on the wrong side of the road, facing oncoming traffic in order to clear the parked vehicles and make these turns. This is dangerous. The amount of business that appears to have been generated thus far by this owner has made these issues a concern. While it is a significant positive that a new business has opened in Spencer, generating tax income and consumer traffic into the town, it would be remiss to disregard concerns such as these. Thank you for your time in considering my comments and concerns. Angela Elkins, resident, South Iredale Avenue, Spencer, North Carolina." And so, I'm providing this as a statement that I received, writing it aloud, reading it aloud verbatim for the record, and I will provide additional context for this case when we get to that item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will move on to our appointments to several of our boards. And so the first is to consider appointing Jessica Klaus of 301 Fourth Street to the Spencer Planning Board and Board of Adjustment to a three-year term expiring December 31st of 2024. Mr. Harris, I'll invite you forward again.
Yes, thank you very much. So the next four items on the agenda concern appointments or reappointments to our boards and commissions, and I will give a broad overview of all four appointments. Item number 11 is considering appointment of Jessica Klaus, 301 Fourth Street, to the Spencer Planning Board and Board of Adjustment for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2024. Item number 12 on the agenda is considering the appointment of Tim Wickowski of 400 Steeplechase Trail to Spencer Planning Board, Board of Adjustment, for a three-year term expiring in December 31st, 2024. Item number 13 is to consider reappointing Nancy Boyd of 403rd Street to the Spencer Historic Preservation Commission for a four-year term expiring December 31st, 2025. And item number 14 is considering reappointing Leslie Ann Talbot of 308 North Salisbury Avenue to the Spencer Historic Preservation Commission for a four-year term expiring on December 31st, 2025. What I will say before, I will say Tim Wickowski, Jessica Klaus, and Leslie Talbot are here. I do not believe Nancy Boyd was able to make it tonight. I did invite them to attend if the Board wanted to invite them. I did say to prepare some sort of statement if you did want to speak to them. The boards of both chairs, the Planning Board and the Historic Preservation Commission, have written letters of recommendation for these appointments. For the two new members of the Planning Board, we have received, we have conducted an interview with the full board and there has been a positive recommendation. For the two members who are being reappointed by the HPC, we did not do another interview process, but we did have a letter of recommendation from the chair. Otherwise, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but we could, if you would like, invite the applicants up to speak if you choose.
So if the Board chooses, I do think since they made the effort to be here tonight, we appreciate you doing that. We would love to hear from you and your interest in serving and really do appreciate you stepping up. So is it okay with the Board that we ask them to come forward? All right, let's ask Ms. Klaus to come forward at this time. Good evening.
Hello, how is everybody?
Good, how are you?
Good, it's nice to see all of you. And I'm new to Spencer. I married Tim six years ago and I raised my daughter in Charlotte. So coming to Spencer was quite new for me. But I did grow up in the small town of Gastonia. And a lot like Spencer, we had the old parts and the new parts and what are you going to do with the old architecture and that kind of thing. I was really excited when I came here and I fell in love with the town because of the architecture and because of the history. And I see so much potential here that when Jim asked if I would be interested in serving on the Planning Board, I jumped at it. We bought a house across from the library, so we have a vested interest here and we love renovating old homes. That said, I would like to see Spencer grow in in a positive way. I don't want it to lose its small-town feel because I see Charlotte encroaching, I see the traffic coming, and it's been so nice to be out of that. I was in Charlotte today and I just see more and more high-rises going up. And in my neighborhood where there used to not be any mid-rises, they're going up all over the place and it takes you an hour to go to the neighborhood grocery store. That's what I don't want to see happen here. So I think we need to give the growth of Spencer and the revitalization a lot of thought. A lot of thought, and I like her idea of a land manager. Sort of apart from an architectural board. One idea my husband and I had was to raise the standards of people who own rental homes. Because it seems the standards are not appropriate at this point, or they're not being enforced. I don't know enough yet to be able to determine that. But I also would like to see zoning to adapt room for bed and breakfast in these beautiful old homes, which would bring in business. It would restore the homes without the town having to spend money restoring the buildings and the homes because there would be potential for money-making for people going to the train station right across the street. There's a gold mine. And the kids and train excursions, people are dying to have a place close by when they have to get on the train at 5:00 a.m. So I really look forward to serving and to helping everyone in the community, not just a few, and to just improve the way of life and get it back to the way it was when Mr. Spencer was around.
Thank you very much, Ms. Klaus. Does anybody have questions?
Ms. Klaus, have you had the experience with the Board of Adjustment, Planning Board, anything like that at all?
No, I haven't. Now, I did study city planning when I studied architecture and interior design in Italy. So I have had that background, but I would be new. I've run several businesses, so I think that'll help a lot. But I think in... But I think in working together and the people that have been on the board for a while, I can learn pretty quick.
Other question? All right. Hearing none. This time, we'll entertain a motion from the board. So, choose.
I'll second it.
There's a motion by Mr. Miller and a second by Mr. Morgan. Further discussion? All in favor? Right? All opposed? That is approved unanimously.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm very excited.
Welcome to the board, and thank you for being willing to serve.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is to consider appointing Mr. Tim Wikowski of 400 Steeplechase Trail to the Spencer Planning Board and Board of Adjustment for a three-year term also expiring December 31st of 2024. Good evening.
Welcome. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor Pro-Tim, Alder Women and Alderman. You know, everybody did a fine job, and congratulations to the new board members also. Tim Wikowski, I live at 400 Steeplechase Trail. I was approached about coming on to the Planning Board, and I think I've taken like a 15-year break from local government to, but previous, my previous life in local government was on the Planning Board, on the Board of Adjustments, on the Board of Adjustments. So, this is new to me now. So, I'm looking forward to it. If I'm appointed, I'll serve to the board here, and we'll try to make the best decisions possible to bring to you guys for recommendations. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to ask, answer.
All right. The board have questions for Mr. Wikowski?
I do have. How much does this job pay?
A free bottle of water and some candy every now and then.
Thanks a lot, though. I appreciate it.
I would like to, I'd like to move that we appoint this guy, Tim Wikowski, to the Spencer Planning Board and Board of Adjustment.
All right. There's a motion by Mr. Morgan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sledge. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? And that is also approved unanimously. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is to consider appointing Ms. Nancy Boyd of 403rd Street to the Spencer Historic Preservation Committee for a four-year term expiring December 31st of 2025.
All right. Because Nancy isn't here, I'll just speak very briefly on her behalf. She has been a member of our commission for some time now. Jacqueline Jensen, who is the chair, wrote her a letter of recommendation, and I'll read just an excerpt now. She says that Nancy is an excellent and engaged member of our board. She is extremely valuable to our HPC because of her deep knowledge of our historic district. Her main residence is centrally located in the Library Park area, and she regularly makes time to walk our district. Nancy is always aware of new and ongoing projects. Nancy has helped with the development of our brochure and our new historic preservation guidelines, among other projects. As part of her current responsibilities, Nancy has taken up the charge of spearheading and organizing a subcommittee to review past COAs. This committee will help to follow through with proper and timely completion of COAs within our district. I am often impressed with her dedication to the town and her willingness to take on new tasks. She has a great ability to develop quality relationships with our residents, which directly furthers our mission to preserve the unique history of Spencer. Nancy has made consistent and meaningful contributions to every case that comes before our commission. She has a creative nature and a strong passion for preservation in the highest standard. So, that's just an excerpt, and the full letter is in your packet.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thank you.
All right. With that, is there any discussion by the board? Again, this would be a reappointment. Hearing none, is there a motion to reappoint Ms. Nancy Boyd to the HPC?
Wait.
All right. There's a motion by Mr. Mohammed.
I'll second it.
I think I heard Ms. Sledge first. We'll give that to her. All in favor? Right? Opposed? All right. That is also approved. And finally, last but certainly not least, to consider reappointing Ms. Leslie Ann Talbot, 308 North Salisbury Avenue, to the Spencer Historic Preservation Commission for another four-year term expiring December 31st, 2025. And I would be remiss if I did not give Ms. Talbot an opportunity to speak.
You have three minutes.
Takes me three minutes to adjust my glasses.
Thank you, sir.
I want to say, I really would have enjoyed my finishing out the term for Judy Stoner. I've learned a lot. I've still got a lot to learn. My original reason for wanting to be on the board was to help Spencer tell its story by honoring and preserving its architectural legacy, and we have got quite a legacy. Our old building has witnessed the aesthetic and cultural history of our town, giving our people, our townspeople, something, a sense of place and a sense of the past. And with the new development, it will give us a sense of future as we come together. And there is, as a historic preservation, it's not just the old homes that we want to preserve. We want to be able to allow and grow and bring in contemporary buildings that do not overshadow our historic buildings and their stories, but to complement them and encourage people to come and stay and be a part of our community. That's all I got to say. See, I could...
Thank you, Ms. Talbot. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Talbot? All right. Hearing none. I will entertain a motion.
I move that we reappoint Leslie Ann Talbot to the Historic Preservation Committee.
There is a motion by Ms. Sledge.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro-Tim. Further discussion? All in favor? Right? Opposed? That is approved unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Talbot. Thank you for your service and the energy that you put into the Historic Preservation Committee. All right. And next on our list, we have moved item 10 down now, and that will be that the board will consider adopting an ordinance that would amend the official zoning map and rezone the property at 200 South Salisbury Avenue from Primary General Use District C-29, which is U.S. Highway 29 Commercial, to Conditional Zoning District BSR CZ-21-001 for vehicle service or repair, for conditional rezoning. That, welcome back, Mr. Harris.
All righty. Let me see. I need to organize my paperwork here. As y'all notice, in your agenda materials, there were two separate memos associated with this case. One of those memos was for the legislative hearing that took place last week, and one of the memos is for tonight. I do want to thank you, and I appreciate the fact that these were fairly lengthy memos. There was a lot of material to get into that packet, but I thought it would be important to, for the record, put everything down that was associated with the case. My goal is to facilitate the process for all rezonings to the best of my ability and to present you all of the information that you need to make an educated decision. And of course, I'll begin tonight with a presentation, and then I will be available for any questions that you have about the background of the case, the procedures for reviewing and approving, denying, or tabling a decision tonight, and any other questions that you have associated with this case. So, let me begin by saying that, as a quick overview, especially for our two new board members, the case under consideration tonight is a proposed conditional rezoning of the property at 200 South Salisbury Avenue. This is a property that is located on the corner of Second Street and South Salisbury Avenue. You may be familiar with the building. It's currently being used as an automobile repair business. The property is actually not zoned for a vehicle service use. It's currently zoned C-29, which is Spencer's U.S. Highway 29 Commercial District. In that commercial district, any vehicle service, automobile repair-related use is not currently a lawful use in that district. And so, what we as the town did, instead of requiring Mr. King, who is the applicant, to close immediately upon learning that the business was unlawfully operating, the town decided to work with him through this rezoning process to allow him to continue to lawfully operate, provided that he and the owner of the property were working with the town in good faith to get this across the finish line, one way or the other. The board hopefully will come to a decision tonight about whether to approve or not the rezoning. I'm trying to think where I should start because there's so much I could say about the background of this case. The owner, Mr. Tyler Went, he is not local, I believe. I think he grew up in Spencer, but he's currently living in Atlanta, Georgia. So, he has authorized the tenant, who is Mr. Michael King. He is the business owner of the New Edge Paint &amp; Performance that's currently operating out of that space. Mr. King is the authorized applicant who submitted the rezoning application and who has been working with me, attending the neighborhood meetings, the Planning Board meeting, the legislative hearing, and acting on behalf of that business. So, the primary question that the board will be considering tonight is whether to approve the conditional rezoning of that property. The property would be rezoned to the Vehicle Service and Repair District, but it would be a conditional district. What that means is that the town has a conditional rezoning process, and that process allows the town and the owner to negotiate additional conditions or limitations on the use of the property. So, for a conditional zoning, essentially, you, let's say that they were, let's say in this case, they were requesting a rezoning to Vehicle Service and Repair, the primary district. If that was approved, the owner would be allowed to use the property for all of the uses that are listed in the Vehicle Service District. In this case, the town's Vehicle Service District allows things like junkyards and other types of things that are certainly, on any objective analysis, not appropriate for this spot. The conditional zoning process allows the town to specifically say, this property can only be used for this specific use, in this case, a minor vehicle service business, and also to impose additional conditions or limitations on that property. In this case, the applicant has agreed to five separate categories of conditions and limitations on how he would use this property. I am going to, for the record, read aloud those limitations because I think it's, what it really boils down to is whether or not the applicant has proposed sufficient limitations on the property that would mitigate any adverse impacts to surrounding properties. In this case, the property is directly adjacent to a high-density historic residential area. So, on two sides, the property is bounded by historic residences, and on the other sides, it's bounded by civic property. In one case, a community garden, and in the other case, the town fire department. So, again, the purpose of the limitations is to, to the extent that the applicant can mitigate any adverse impacts to surrounding properties. So, I'm going to list the five categories of limitations that he has proposed. The first category is limitation on the automobile work area. The applicant has proposed the following limitations. That all automobile work will only be performed in the work bay area located at the rear of the building. The work bay will be screened from view behind a six-foot privacy fence or screening that meets the town's standards. The work area will be totally screened from street view with fencing or a combination of fencing and screening vegetation as permitted. No automobile work will be carried out in the front or side yards of the building. No automobile work will be performed in any location visible from the street or in any location that is not screened from view by an opaque privacy fence. The second category is the limitation on vehicle storage areas. So, as part of this, the applicant is proposing the following limitations. The applicant will remove all vehicles from the site that are not currently being serviced or awaiting service. Vehicles will not be parked or stored on the lot purely for display, except as provided. There shall be a maximum of one display car located on the property. The display car will be located in front of the building and will be parked on gravel or pavement, not on the grass. The shop will implement a policy for vehicle storage. Specifically, the shop will have an internal written policy to store vehicles only in designated storage areas that are completely screened from view from the street. No cars will be parked on the Second Street side yard of the building in any circumstance. Cars being serviced will be located only in designated, properly screened vehicle storage areas on the west side of the building, which is screened with fencing, and in the rear of the building, screened with fencing, pending approval of a fence permit and an alley closure request. The shop's front parking lot will be for employees or visitors only. The front parking lot will not be used for the storage of vehicles awaiting service. The third category of limitations is hours of operation. The shop's hours will be limited from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Saturday. The shop will be closed on Sundays. No work will be performed outside of these established hours. The fourth category of limitations is site and landscape improvements. The front parking area will be improved with paved concrete or crushed stone gravel, meeting the town's standards. The applicant will seek to close the existing front driveway at the corner of Second Street and Salisbury Avenue and landscape the front side yard corner in a way that improves the overall appearance of the corner. The applicant will, excuse me, the town will study making improvements to the Second Street/Salsbury Avenue intersection. The town will study the feasibility of installing a planter or other landscaping improvements here. The applicant will improve the Second Street side yard with additional landscaping, such as trees, bushes, flowers, et cetera. The applicant will plant bushes and other vegetation along any new portion of fencing to improve the appearance of and soften the fencing. And then finally, the fifth condition is the public alley closure. The applicant will submit to the town an alley closure petition, and if approved, will, with the consent of the adjacent property owner, install a fence to completely obstruct the rear storage/work area from view. And so, those are all of the limitations that the applicant has proposed. What I will say during the neighborhood meeting and the Planning Board hearing, the primary issue when it comes to those who have opposed this is the visual aspect, the visual clutter of whether it's appropriate to have a vehicle storage use on that corner, given its proximity to a historic area. There have also been a number of questions, obviously with the comment that I read earlier, about the parking of vehicles on the lot and on the Second Street right next to the What I would say about the parking is, I have studied the town's parking regulations. It is supported for businesses to use most of our streets for parking, as long as those areas are not no-parking areas, or as long as the vehicles are not parked within 30 feet of an intersection. So, in general, the town has wide latitude for parking of vehicles. When it comes to a vehicle storage land use, or excuse me, a vehicle service land use, the only limitation is that vehicles that are awaiting service or being worked on cannot be parked in the public right-of-way. So, in that case, if there is a vehicle that is awaiting service and is being stored on the lot, it would have to be stored outside of the public view. So, anyway, I could go in a number of directions here. What I would say is that the Planning Board did meet on November 8th for their required consideration of this item. The Planning Board at that time did propose to approve this rezoning. They voted that the proposed conditional zoning amendment is consistent with the future land use plan and other adopted plans, is consistent with the future land use map, and should be approved. When the Planning Board deliberated and made that vote, they decided to use the following justification. So, they wrote, excuse me, let me find it. This is what I get for creating such a large packet. This is what I get for creating such a large packet. Excuse me?
Exhibit.
Yes, thank you. The planning board voted, this is the following statement. "They adopted a future land use plan consistency statement that read as follows: 'The proposed amendment is consistent with the future land use plan because the proposed rezoning will allow the property to be used for automobile repair services. The property has been vacant and/or underutilized for a substantial period of time. The owner has had difficulty attracting a tenant to use the building. The rezoning will allow the property to be occupied by a business that will invest in the building and make improvements to the site and will therefore help to improve and revitalize Spencer's downtown commercial district. And this is supported by future land use goal number one, which is in the town's current comprehensive plan.' The planning board also voted that the proposed rezoning will improve the public perception of Spencer by helping to reduce the number of vacant and/or underutilized buildings in the downtown area, which is supported by future land use goal number two. The planning board also voted that the, through the conditional zoning process, the applicant has agreed to a list of conditions and limitations on the use and development of the property to ensure compatibility with the surrounding area. Adjacent properties include historic residential homes and civic sites such as the Spencer Community Garden. The applicant has proposed limitations on the automobile work area, vehicle storage area, hours of operation, and has proposed site and landscaping improvements and construction of fencing to screen and buffer the vehicle service use from adjacent uses. The planning board also voted that the proposed amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because, again, through the conditional zoning process, the applicant has agreed to a list of conditions on the use and development of the property to mitigate adverse impacts and detriments to adjacent landowners, neighborhoods, and the surrounding community. The use of the property for vehicle services is compatible with Spencer's perception as a center of transportation, evidenced by the Transportation Museum and the town's many transportation-themed events, such as the classical vehicle cruises." Now, what I will also say is that although the planning board did vote to recommend approval, there were a number of public comments that clearly opposed the proposed rezoning. And I did include those in your agenda materials. The neighborhood meeting summary is provided as exhibit seven. The planning board meeting minutes from November 8th are included as exhibit four. And then I did read earlier the additional public comment speaking out in opposition. So I guess what I would say now is, I'll open to any questions that you have. There are a number of ways I could take this conversation, but I think it would be most appropriate for me to field any questions that you have, and we can go in that direction.
All right, with that, we will open it up for board for questions.
Paris, what is the definition of serviced and awaiting?
So service means a car is currently being worked on, either repaired or refurbished, repainted, or some other service related to that vehicle. And then awaiting service means it's currently parked on the lot, being stored on the lot, and that there is some scheduled date or time in which it will be worked on.
That's awfully wrong, given the size of the property. Does that imply, I mean, back in working farm on driveway, I mean, is that, what is that, again, where is that taking place? In the bay? Is that what that means?
So the building currently has, my understanding, is between four and six work bays. So any car that is being worked on gets pulled inside of the building and is worked on at that time. There is currently, you can see in the photographs, a rear storage yard that is not currently screened. A lot of the vehicles that are awaiting service are being parked in that area. One of the issues that has arisen is that because there is not currently a fence here, it does not meet the town's standards because, per the town's development ordinance, any vehicle service use has to be screened from adjacent properties. So as part of this conditional zoning, if you were to approve it, in order for them to continue operating, they would have to build a fence to screen that area.
So a follow-up to that, you know, I'm looking, one of the stipulations on this conditional rezoning being proposed, those cars being serviced will be located only in designated, properly-screened vehicle storage areas on the west side of the building. To me, if they're being serviced, that should be within the bays of the facility itself. It would be that the cars awaiting service will be located only in designated, properly-screened storage areas. There is unfortunately not, right now, we cannot take comments from the public. We've had a chance for a hearing, community meetings, and for public comment.
Which category are you referring to specifically? There are A through E.
Stipulation B, limitation on vehicle storage areas, item number four.
Yes, that makes sense. So I suppose it should read, "Cars awaiting service will be located in designated, properly-screened vehicle storage areas."
And then that being the case, there also needs to be a, yeah, so we say all auto work will be performed. That is covered then in the limitation of automobile. Actual vehicles being serviced.
Yes, that makes sense.
And how many in terms of the awaiting? So it sounds like, I think Mr. Mayor is, we're on the same wavelength here. So approximately based on what we just talked about, four to six would be serviced. How many would be awaiting service, not?
I can't speak to the specifics of that. What I could say is that the property is, in general, fairly small, and so the numbers of vehicles awaiting service could only be as many as could fit in the enclosed area. And I can't speak to the exact number of that. From the photographs, I would say approximately a dozen plus or minus vehicles could fit back there. But again, I couldn't speak specifically to it.
Do you limit the number?
You could limit the number as a board.
Okay, other questions from the board at this time?
Where were these pictures taken from? We're looking at these, the number of vehicles.
Are you speaking to exhibit 10?
Yes.
So those were vehicles that I took my, or pictures I took myself, and those were taken on December 3rd?
Did they, did they, are they?
Yes.
I have a question, the stipulation about the fencing, coordination with the neighboring property owner. What if they are not able to get permission from the neighboring property?
So I guess there are two elements to that. The first is that as part of this, the applicant will be required to submit an alley closure petition. One reason for doing that is that in order to build a fence that properly encloses the vehicle storage area, you essentially would have to close the alley because there's not enough room back there, as it is currently existing. Now, the neighboring property owner has confirmed that he is willing to work with Mr. King on a fence between those two properties. I can't speak to any future owner. That is one of the reasons why the alley closure is important because it shouldn't be necessary to rely on a future property owner of the neighboring property to continue to support the fence construction. Really, closing the alley and building the fence there on the subject property itself would probably be best. I'm not sure I explained that in particular.
Yeah, I think so. The follow-up question, on a slightly different note, relates to the site and landscape that are being stipulated. My question is, why are we in a conditional zoning stipulating something the town is doing? As far as studying, making improvements to the Second Street/Salsbury Avenue intersection, studying the feasibility of installing a planter or other landscaping. Whether we do that or not, that's one thing, that's prerogative of the town, but we're put into a zoning program. Why should the town be responsible for upfitting a property within that right-of-way location because a private property?
So that stipulation could easily be removed. I put there in parentheses, and I use language that doesn't tie the town to doing it. I really just put that in there as a suggestion that the town could study making improvements in that area as part of its overall Salisbury Avenue corridor improvements. If, as a board, you're uncomfortable with putting that suggestion in there, we could remove it.
That's up for discussion by the board. My personal opinion is that not be putting anything in the zoning to move forward with this, but firing the town into something like that. Whether we actually do anything or not, we are saying that we should study. I don't, I don't, I don't see that, I don't think the taxpayers could bear the cost going through with the study and potential improvements of the property.
Paris, yeah, the applicant is not the owner of the property, and we've been, we've established that early on. What is the relationship of the applicant and the owner of the property, or his future? Buying this property, he on a month-to-month lease with it? What is the situation there?
So Mr. King is the tenant of the property. Tyler Went is the property owner. I'm not sure exactly what the contractual relationship is, whether it's month-to-month or more than that. In my conversations with Mr. King, he has previously indicated that he is exploring the idea of purchasing the building in the future. But again, that's not something I can speak to specifically.
So if we approve this, we approve this petition of approval, the owner of the property can come back and, anything that's purposeful?
Yes, so the conditional, if this board approves the conditional rezoning, then that will live with the property in perpetuity. Meaning, let's say there was a future tenant who came in and wanted to also use the property for some sort of automobile repair use. They could, however, they would have to abide by the exact conditions that you impose on them or the previous tenant. So essentially, all of these conditions live with the property and are added as additional regulations for the use and development of that property. So any future automobile repair use, for example, would have to abide by these hours of operation limitations. So 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Saturday, and so on. If, for whatever reason, the owner, Mr. Went, was no longer interested in using the property for a vehicle service use, he could come to the town and ask for the property simply, the conditional zoning ordinance to simply be repealed, and that would make the property revert back to its previous zoning classification, which was C-29 commercial. And so that's how that works. There's, if this conditional zoning ordinance is in any way violated, the property automatically reverts back to C-29 commercial. So it would be exactly as it is today.
An additional question, within the ordinance itself that's been drafted, you're considering. What is the date in which all of these items need to go into effect? As I read it, ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption, which would mean that the owner would be technically out of compliance with all of these matters from the get-go, if they were. Is there a specific time that was outlined in which they would have to complete these improvements? And where I'm going with that is, I don't want to continue kicking the can down the proverbial road with these improvements that are necessary. The facility's been operating out of compliance several months now. And our reasoning for that was that we were going to consider this rezoning. Now we're in a situation where, in order for them to take these upgrades, it's going to take some amount of time, and that's yet further time that they're operating that potentially be a detriment to the neighborhood without these improvements.
So the ordinance does not establish a timeline. That is something that we could talk about tonight. My vision, if this were to be adopted, my vision would be that the town would establish, through the notice of violation process, 60 days or 90 days, some sort of timeline negotiated between the planning department and the applicant on what that timeline would look like. If, as a board, you would be more comfortable getting that down in writing, we certainly could discuss that, what would be an appropriate timeline. If not, then that would simply be something that the town, through its discretion, would enforce some sort of timeline.
I mean, I just recognize some of these, like your alley closure, just in the process that it takes to make that happen. I think if the board does consider moving forward with this tonight, those are some things to absolutely consider, certainly I would. Hi, Mark.
One recommendation could be, and I'm just throwing this out there, planning department staff could bring forward to the board a draft of a notice of violation that would include stipulations on a timeline at a future meeting. That way, if you're not comfortable establishing a specific deadline or timeline tonight, you could still weigh in on it through a future board meeting, for example, in January or February.
So then that's the board kicking the can down the road. That's personally not something.
I'd like to weigh in on this. There's some confusion. You said earlier that the town would be responsible for improvements, but I'm looking at this one page, which is in number four, "Site and Landscape Improvements", and it says, "The applicant will improve the Second Street side yard with additional landscaping such as trees, bushes, flowers, et cetera." In addition, you know, the town's doing a feasibility study to put a planter's in there as well.
So with this category, the site and landscape improvements, this was the last category that I talked about with the applicant. This was more of an attempt to try to improve the appearance of the lot, given its proximity to a historic area. A lot of these are more or less suggestions. For example, there's no, there's no language that you have to plant this many trees or do this specific type of landscaping.
Well, I think, I think the board should seriously consider supporting the decision of the planning board, which has given a lot of thought to this. Spencer has lost too many of its businesses. It continues to bleed businesses. It's sort of a paradox that, you know, here we have one property that is right in the middle of the historic district, but it's been zoned for, you know, business. And maybe the neighbors may not like that, but that's part of being in a small town. You've got businesses scattered all along, up and down north and south Salisbury Avenue. I think it would, I think it would be a benefit to the town to make sure that the businesses that are here are given our support in order to thrive and do so within the confines of the ordinances and the, you know, the zoning that is established. So I think that, well, as far as my opinion is that we go forward, maybe with a timeline, but support this zoning change so that he can operate the business properly. I think if, I don't think it's kicking the can down the road. I think it's making sure that we all have to live together, especially- I think it's making sure that we all have to live together, especially the residences and the business. There's got to be some compromise here. And I, I think that the zoning board has done its due diligence, and I think that we should support their recommendation.
I think, Mr. Morgan, are there other questions or other board comments?
It concerns me that in looking at the, I mean, this is our pre-agenda meeting. In looking at the people who were notified, the neighborhood hearing. Out of the 40 who were notified, 15 were homeowners. 19 of those people were out of town, property owners, absentee landlords, generally call them. Four of them were civic organizations. One is a town-owned property. And then apparently a local business, perhaps, notified. These absentee landlords probably didn't have any contact with their renter. And I, I just, I wonder how the people who actually lived there feel about it. We had, what, two people who lived adjacent to the property come and speak in favor. One spoke in opposition. And a second, we had a letter this week. It's from someone who lives in the neighborhood, maybe not on adjacent property. And that's, that's one concern because we have absentee landlords who live near the property. That's part of the problem with our zoning, with zoning violations. So, I mean, that's, I, I don't know. I mean, this gentleman has put a lot of effort and a lot of work into establishing business there. I really think he's in the wrong spot. I just, I really wonder how people truly feel about it and why they haven't bothered to speak up, you know, either in favor or.
So I, I will address the question of how adjacent property owners were notified. The local ordinance only requires that we notify the immediately abutting property owners, which we certainly did. For the neighborhood meeting, I took the liberty of dramatically expanding the notice area, sending it to a broad area in the neighborhood. It is true that a number of the property owners in that area are absentee owners or otherwise the property, the notice may not have gone directly to the tenant. One of the things that we have done as part of the required process is put up a public hearing notice prominently in front of the property so that if you did not receive a letter and you regularly frequent that area, you can see the notice of, of a public hearing that will direct people to me, and I can provide them additional information. The notice actually provided the summary of the case as well as the date and time of the legislative hearing last week. I can't speak to whether or not absentee owners notified their tenants. But in terms of the town's responsibility, doing everything that we can reasonably with a zoning, we did widely notice the neighborhood meeting, the planning board meeting, legislative hearing last week. I think we did go above and beyond notifying anyone who may be impacted or interested in speaking.
I'm not saying that you didn't do your due diligence. I'm just saying that I wonder if people who actually were impacted, they have a clue about what's going on.
Miss Sledge, are there other comments? Mr. Miller?
Yeah, real fast. I've attended all these meetings, Paris. And I realize the property that we're talking about is very important to the community because it's kind of a buffer area between our residential area and our commercial area. And over the years, Elon Termite, which run that business, was not a very pretty building. Still not a very pretty building. And it's just one of those buildings you kind of ignore as you go up through there. And I am concerned about what's going to happen if we don't, what's going to go in there. Something can go in there business-wise. I'm going to defend Mr. King because I think Mr. King is a fine person. I think he got off on the wrong foot by putting a lot of vehicles on Second Street, trying to advertise his business. And that threw up a lot of red flags. People didn't like that approach. But I think the fencing will help. Mr. King has got the approval of his two neighbors that is closest to him. And, you know, their approval, I don't see how we can stand too much in their way. He has a good business. He does good work. He's got the approval of his neighbors, adjacent neighbors. So I'm kind of leaning like what Sam says. I think we should keep limitations on this thing. Some of this stuff needs to be rewritten tonight for approval and everything else, but I certainly don't. And I kind of think Mr. King's going to buy him because he's just a property owner. He's spending his own money building these fences. Nobody realized. Owner of the property is not doing anything. Mr. King's gone in and rewired the electrical in the building. Guy got things to, to a working shape. He has no right. He can be kicked out of that building just like that. So I'm going to defend Mr. King. I think he's doing a good job. I think he's a good person. I think he's made some mistakes, but I think everybody makes mistakes. I think he'd be a good.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Other questions or comments from the board at this time?
I'll briefly, excuse me, I guess answer later on some of this as well. I do think it is tricky business speculating on what property owners might say they are not here. And they've not participated in the process, whether they know or not. They've not, they've not participated in the process. And I think speculation gets us in trouble. I, I do think business is important. As a business owner here in Spencer myself, I think it's tricky business also to begin saying which businesses we want in Spencer and which we don't. With that said, I think my primary concerns are finding what service and awaiting service means. And also, that way, we all know what we're agreeing to. That's for Mr. King's benefit. That's for your benefit, enforcement, and our benefit as a board. And if, as with any of us who own property in Spencer, if someone doesn't like something he's doing, if this, assuming this is approved, they can always complain to you like they would with any of us or anyone else for that matter. So I think we get those two definitions tight, as it were, in vernacular. Then I think, I think I would feel better about where we are.
All right, thank you, Mr. Howe.
Well, what I will say, I'm trying to look because I do know that the town's Article Five amendments to the development ordinance, actually, let me see. And again, please bear with me as I search through my agenda materials. There is a section of your packet which does speak to the requirements for any vehicle storage use. And I'm trying to find that language because I think it may elucidate that question. Again, my apologies.
I think we kind of put you on the spot with this. Don't worry.
It's in here somewhere. I can guarantee that.
Al, are you looking for perhaps the description of current zoning, description of proposed zoning? That's in the staff memorandum, it appears. It went up around page six or seven.
Okay, yes, I found it. So section 10.1-4 of our zoning ordinance, and chapter 10 speaks to additional standards for specific uses. In this case, it speaks to automobile slash boat slash equipment repair services. In this case, these are the standards that are written. One, vehicles awaiting repair shall not be parked in the public right-of-way. Number two, no outdoor automobile slash boat work areas are to be located in the front yard setback area. And number three, all automobile, outdoor automobile slash boat work areas and/or vehicle storage areas shall be screened from adjacent uses with a six-foot-tall opaque fence and a Type D buffer. Plantings shall be on the exterior side of the fence. So in this case, the, the ordinance doesn't specifically define what it means by awaiting repair or vehicle storage areas. And maybe, I don't know if our attorney would want to weigh in on this, but the common sense view, in my opinion, would be awaiting repair means the vehicle is parked on the lot, it has been dropped off, and it's going to be worked on. And a vehicle that is being, undergoing repair is one that is in the bay and being actively worked on. I guess I would ask specifically what your question is with those definitions.
I can speak to that. My concern is awaiting repair forever a year, right?
For the timeline.
Somebody drops a vehicle off and it sits there for an inordinate amount of time awaiting repair.
And the sheer number.
I'll tell you right now, a lot of problems.
So what I would, what I would say about that, as part of this conditional zoning ordinance, part of that language is that the use of the property for junk motor vehicle storage, as well as automobile towing and storage services, is specifically not allowed. The only use that is allowed is vehicle repair service. So if a vehicle is parked there for an inordinate number of time, then I suppose the town could go after the property for violating the uses that are allowed. If it becomes this, the case that the property is by all intents and purposes being used as a junkyard, that is specifically prohibited by the ordinance that you're being, is under consideration tonight. Another thing that I would say is going back earlier, the vehicle storage area will be enclosed by a fence. So the number of vehicles that can be awaiting service is only the amount that could fit in that enclosed area. You wouldn't be able to see or notice, vehicles could not spill out of the defined storage area. So it could not be the case that vehicles were suddenly spilling out onto the street or onto the side yard or in the front parking area. They would only be allowed in that designated storage area that is enclosed by a fence and screened. And that's the best I can do in terms of elaborating on that.
Yes, the next question is number four.
So the town, myself, our code enforcement officer, James Osborne, and our new planning and zoning administrator, Steve Blunt, would be working on this case.
So I will ask the board at this time, the applicant here tonight.
Yes.
The board have specific questions for the applicant? I have a couple relative to what we were talking about. Hey, good evening. Thank you for bearing with us.
Hey, John.
So a couple of questions that I had relative to what we're talking about. In that back area, roughly what do you estimate to be a considerable number of vehicles stuck in the back there awaiting service?
Right now, there's six. I don't try to keep them on the lot more than seven to eight days. Right now, the only thing that's holding us up, the only reason there's cars back there right now, is the simple fact that, like lady said, it's, I can't get parts. Everything's sitting in a container ship on a ship or in a port somewhere. That's the only reason that the cars are even there for the amount of time that they've been there. On an average, the car comes in, it's done in three to seven days. I'm not doing service repair work. I'm not rebuilding engines. I'm not dumping oil. We're more of a restoration shop. Anything that's a big project is inside. Nothing stays outside other than a small in-and-out job. Right now, I'm struggling with, like, just like any other business, just to get materials in because I, I can't control what the heck's going on with all that. But as far as storage goes, I've tried to keep everything contained. I don't have anything on the streets. As far as Second Street goes, you come down Second Street, you pass the shop, and then you're literally driving down the road because there's no parking for the homeowners and the tenants on that road. You're literally driving down the middle of the street because there's cars parked on both sides of the road. I don't have trucks and trailers on the road. I keep one 20-foot trailer at my home. I have one Mustang and a minivan. I don't even own a truck. So anything that's on the road has nothing to do with it. I don't park anything on the road. I don't tell my customers to park on the road. And the only reason there was cars parked on the side road, not the side road, but on the side of the building, was pretty much to get attention, saying, hey, we're open. And it got a lot of attention, obviously. Some good, some bad, but I, I didn't realize it when everything went down. They told me that the building was zoned commercial. I didn't think anything about it. I actually came up to the town, asked for a permit, and I guess it was the first couple of days that Kyle was working with you guys, and he said I didn't need it. He says he hasn't recalled that, but hey, no big deal. No harm, no foul. I'm trying to work with everybody. I, I've dumped probably $30,000 into that building of my own money that I'm not going to get back. We've rewired stuff to get it up to code. It just passed the fire inspection for the first time in 14 years, the fire marshal said. We're, I'm trying to get it right. We have stuff planned. I just, I'm not going to lie to anybody, I don't want to dump another $15,000 into a parking lot and landscaping if you guys say get out. So it's not smart. I'm already knee-deep in a drowning boat going down, so I'm trying to not kill myself financially.
So you're saying seven to eight cars that you're storing?
Yeah, that's about the max.
That's probably not the maximum.
That's about the max.
Pretty close.
Like, between the side yard that's already fenced in and then the concreted pad behind the building, there's seven cars back there. If there's more cars back there, like I said, the tenant behind me, the property owner behind me, he has five or six vehicles of his own, and he uses that back driveway just like we do. And they're not all my cars. So I'm trying to keep it on a minimum.
Okay. And then the other question, all the work, are you doing that inside the bays at this time?
There's nothing that's.
Because that's one of the things that was not stipulated on here specifically. It basically says that work will be performed in the work bay area located at the river building, but it doesn't specify inside.
There's, there's seven bays in the building that we've.
Can you do all of the operations inside?
The only thing that we don't do inside is wash the cars. Other than that, there's, if we have to do something, if it's nice out, we'll, we'll do something outside in the back pad. But 99.9% of the work is done inside the facility, behind closed doors, to where you guys don't even know I'm there.
Well, and that's what I was going to ask. If we stipulate that in this condition, for, for permit, that would, all work would have to be done inside the building?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't want the stuff outside to begin with because of the elements. So everything that I do, that's what, like, you guys keep saying service and repair. I, I don't do brakes. I don't do oil changes. I, I don't do any of that crap. It's higher-end restorations that we're doing, higher-end cars. We have Celine Mustangs, Corvettes, LS swap trucks, stuff like that. I'm not working on Joe Schmo's Honda. I don't do wrecked vehicles. I don't do any of that type of stuff. It's not a junkyard. Some of the cars that come in looking like junk, I, I can't say anything about that because that's what we do. We fix them. But it's not a junkyard. It's not a repair facility. It's more of a custom shop. We do, we sell parts, we sell merchandise, we sell stuff, just don't work on it. That's why I figured that building would work and.
So the other thing we were talking about was timeline for implementing them. Obviously, some of them, like work, work hours and things like that could be pretty immediate, correct?
Yeah, that's.
What about some of the actual infrastructure? What about some of the actual infrastructure, like fencing?
Well, the fencing's already up. The fencing's already up.
The back?
You can't, if you drive down Second Street, you literally have to break your neck to see what's going on. You have to drive into the driveway, or the alleyway, whatever you guys want to call it, to see what's going on. You can't see anything coming down Salisbury Avenue, going down Second Street.
Quick question, Kyle. That group for our permit.
I, I, I paid...
So there is a partial portion of the fence has been constructed. That was approved, fence permit, and it approved it. You can see from the, on the front of the building, there was a portion of fencing built between the side property line and building, obscuring the view from the front of the side storage yard. Also, a portion of fencing in the back that was also approved by the... However, in order to fully enclose that screening, that storage area, there would be additional segment of fencing built in what is now an open alley. That's why, as part of the process, there's the alley closure. If the alley gets closed, then there will be the requisite needed space built that rest of the fence. The intent of the way the ordinance is written is that that entire back area be fully enclosed by fencing, not just partially, not just partially obstructed from certain angles, but fully enclosed with six-foot-tall opaque.
Should we close the alley first? Are we putting the cart before the horse? Should that, should the alleyway be closed first?
I think in this case, the timing for getting this done is appropriate to be done first. Then, given that there is another process going for alley closure, I thought I'd do that.
Exactly.
So landscaping all those, obviously, now's not...
It's already in play. It's already been paved. Driveway's already been measured, and they're ready to tear it up as soon as I say okay. And it's been put off four times now because of meetings.
So if we were to stipulate all those except for the alley?
Yeah.
Stipulate?
It would be done faster. Honestly, like I said, everything's been set in motion. I, I have other stuff ready to tear the front half of the building apart, to redo the porch and all that stuff. And I've tried to reface the building. And I'm just, I'm not going to lie to you, I'm scared to put any more money into it because I've heard so much other stuff going on to where I wasn't going to get approved or anything like that. It would have been done by now. But I, I'm not going to lie, I'm nervous as hell.
All right.
Yes, it could be done within 60 days.
Board have other questions for the applicant?
What is your personal expectation?
I figured, when I came to Spencer, I figured the whole town was basically based around transportation museum. And what's better than a custom repair shop, or custom body shop, or custom cars? I mean, you guys already have a Cruisin' and everything else, and I figured it would help the town. I've already been approached about TV shows and other stuff. I've been followed around, built I N cars that have gone to SEMA, and I have a follow. I've had business, I've been in business now for 21 years. And as soon as I opened those doors with you guys in Spencer, everybody around me has dropped a car off within a four or five square mile radius. There's, every single car that's in my shop right now is from the city of Spencer. People did it. And it's like, all right, cool. Will I probably outgrow this building? Yes. But will I keep it going? Yeah. I mean, just because I've had support through the community. Had a lot of people yell at me about stuff, but, I mean, overall, everybody that's approached me has thanked me for being here because there's no other facility in the area. So...
You have pretty good relationship. I'll speak to Kyle this morning.
He's talk, I have a year lease with the building, so regardless, if you guys say yea or nay, I still got to pay for the stupid thing.
Your lease already been in?
Uh, I'd have to remember. I think it was July or August. So either way, I'm stuck paying for another seven or eight months, whatever it is, seven, six months, I don't know. So either way, I'm stuck with it because I can't get out of that contract. But, I mean, if he's willing to sell it, I mean, I'm willing to buy it.
Yeah, you, I know it's you and one other person working in business.
It's, I own it. I have a, a partner that helps me every once in a while. He's been MIA because his father-in-law just died. But I financially fund everything.
But you're not, what I'm saying is you're not expanding any more workers because I know...
Oh, no. I mean, we have, I have, right now, six people that are...
Kind of stipulation was you could use your front working employees.
Yes.
So how many cars?
Uh, well, the one gentleman has to park in the rear because he's handicapped, and he can't get up the stairs there. So he just parks in the back where the cars are on the concrete pad so he can wheel himself into the bay and work. There's three other cars there mostly.
So one of the other things that I guess we need you to understand is that you're leasing this right now, and I understand you have a, a lot invested in it. But right now, you're invested in it for a year. This decision is a permanent decision. And so it affects not only you, but future owners of that facility. And I guess what our board is wanting to make sure, got, got some type of commitment that we know what's going to...
I don't plan on going anywhere. If you guys approve it, I don't plan on going anywhere. Like I said, I've dumped too much money into it to just walk away after a year. Me and Tyler have talked about buying and selling, buying the building, and he wants to see what happens with this before we move ahead. But, I mean, I, I don't plan on leaving anytime soon. In the next five or six years, I'd plan on being there, hopefully. Everything goes right tonight. So...
Any other question?
Where, you said you've been in business years. Where were you wor, where you operating before you came?
Concord. Concord.
At your home or?
No. Facility. Shop. And then I worked, I actually ran KIR Restorations in Concord for a gentleman on top of, it got slow with them, so I just, went bigger. The transportation museum, and the fact that you guys have multiple Cruisins and everything else, and that I knew Tyler, and he was like, hey, I heard you're looking for a building. We got a building. So it wasn't like my first prime location, but to be completely honest with you, there's nothing out there right now. There's no buildings, and the building that Tyler offered me had the square footage we needed, and there, it needed improvements. He told me if I had to improve anything, it was on me. But, I mean, the, the building had the size that I needed to do the work inside. The, the outside storage, I, I really wasn't concerned about it because we don't keep cars on the lot for the lengthy period of time that everybody thinks it is. It's just, right now, with COVID crap and all the other stuff going on, I can't get parts. So we've started on stuff, and now it's stalled because we can't get the parts.
Other question for Mr. King? Thank you. All right, with that, are there other questions from the board at this time? Discussion?
Do we feel safe voting pro or, pro or against this question? Is it better to table this? We can actually go along? Do we better? Oh, our T's crossed.
Well, I definitely want to have our T's crossed and our I's dotted, or vice versa. I think, I've made a list of the things we discussed that I think absolutely considered in addition to what we've already discussed. And so we can consider that tonight. I do think, if we table it, once again, we're kicking hands down the road.
We'll make sure everybody's comfortable.
We want to get it right, for sure.
If pro or negative, as far as they go.
For sure. So I've, I've made a list of things, and I'm happy to go through that with everybody, just to kind of summarize. So if you start with the ordinance itself, on the stipulation, item B.4, bullet four, we would need to revise the text instead of saying cars being serviced will be located only in designated properly screened vehicle storage areas. We will, we need to say cars awaiting service. Because cars being serviced are already addressed, item A.
Mr. Mayor, while you're on that point, and to address, I think Alderman Howe's concern, that might be a good space if you wanted to, we, we don't define service and awaiting service in the ordinance. So the default is the common usage of the terms. But it could very well be that you could use that as an opportunity to define awaiting service as a car subject to a written agreement, awaiting delivery of parts, and not to be stored longer than a certain period of time, if that might help address your concern. But you sort of, you, you begin, you define it within this ordinance as opposed to an amendment of the other.
I think that would make... And then the question would be, what does, what constitutes the timeline for awaiting service?
And I, I think, based on what Mr. King said, it's, it's three to seven days, not longer than a couple of weeks. But I think if you, if you, not to be stored longer than 20 days or 30 days.
I would say 30 days, especially given the delay on parts currently seen. But anything longer than that would constitute...
But I think those three bullets is, is a, is an insertion right there, just, just right after you say awaiting service, defined as subject to a written agreement for service, awaiting parts, not to be stored longer than 30 days. I trust, I didn't want to...
Almost like he does it for a living.
I don't want you to think I'm on my phone all night tonight. I, it's, we, we don't have, I didn't know we weren't going to have, uh, uh, signals tonight, so I'm doing everything on my cell phone signal.
So that is item B.4, where we would define cars awaiting service. Item A.1 should have all auto work will be performed only in the work bay area located inside the rear of the building, not at the rear of the building. Item D.3, my suggestion would be to remove that. Whether or not the town does that is separate from this particular, particular provision. What are the board's thoughts on that? Section three, paragraph, bullet number two. The sledge is the one about removing, where it says the town will study making Salisbury Avenue section. I guess the other is going back to, um, item B.4 about cars, the cars awaiting service. I believe here is where we should define a number of cars awaiting service. Heard from Mr. King that he suggested that typically it's seven to eight maximum back there. I would say for leniency purposes, we make it a maximum of no more than 10 vehicles. And the other items have to do with timing. So there are a variety of these that can occur basically now, once items go into effect and approved upon effective date, day, then go into effect. Those would be basically items A, items A, bullet number two, and number three. And item number A.1 can, if work's been done inside. However, the fencing, any of the infrastructure improvements, we heard from Mr. King that can be... I would suggest that any infrastructure items like that, yeah, for the days. With the exception of alley closure, because that's dependent on working with town, that process. Items B.1 and B.2 can go into effect now. And then I have questions on items B. 3 and B.4, as far as the policy for vehicle storage, having a written policy. Yes, no cars being parked on Second Street can go into effect now, but the actual vehicle, the policy be provided within 30 days. Item B.4, this has to deal with the screening, the fencing. So Kyle, I guess that's a question. What's the reasonable timing for alley closure request and all that to accomplish?
I anticipate that would take two months, two to three months.
Let's say 90 days. That's a little more window to make that happen. Item B.5 can occur now. Item C can occur now, that's hours of operation. And then all of item D, we're talking earlier, should be within six days, land, sight and lens. And then item E, that should be within 90 days. Public alley. Do those seem like reasonable timelines?
So, Mr. Mayor, just to make sure that I am on the same page, I'm going to read back aloud what I heard. So I heard that the, in general, the ordinance can be adopted, or would be adopted as written, except for the following amendments. In section three, which speaks to the conditions and limitations, item B.4 would be amended to say that cars being serviced, instead of cars awaiting service. We would also insert the definition of awaiting service, which would include that the vehicle is under, the owner of the vehicle is under a written agreement for the vehicle to be serviced. We would also insert...
And that they should be stored, stored no longer than 30 days.
Yes. That we would insert a timeline that awaiting service would be no longer than 30 days. And there would be no more than 10 vehicles in the back storage area. The second amendment would be A.1, to amend that, all auto work will be performed only inside of the bay, not at the rear bay. And then we would remove D.3, which speaks to the town studying, making improvements on that quarter. And then with... And then with, I believe it would probably be appropriate to put the timeline maybe in section eight, which speaks to when this ordinance becomes effective. That would be the opportunity for us to say what goes into effect immediately. In this case, everything would go into effect immediately, except for the vehicle storage policy would have to be submitted within 30 days. The rear alley closure and screen, fencing construction would have to be completed within 90 days. And the other site and landscaping improvements would need to be completed within 60 days.
And Kyle, while you're, I guess, might go ahead and just opt out or change out the word car for vehicle, since King works on trucks.
Okay. I'll also amend the ordinance to speak to vehicles instead of.
Anything else from the board? Or are you ready to take action?
I'd like to make the motion to change the ordinance, rezone that property 200 South Salisbury Avenue, primary general use to conditional.
Per the amended ordinance 21 dash zero two eight?
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. Morgan. At this time, is there further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor? Three, four, five, four, all those opposed, one opposed. Motion carries.
One thing I would say is, and I'm not sure, and I'll speak to our town attorney maybe about this, as part of adopting a conditional zoning ordinance, you'll find in exhibit two, the statement of consistency and reasonableness. I wonder if it might just, in order to dot our i's and cross our t's, for there to be a motion to adopt that statement of consistency and reasonableness, which speaks to the fact that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the future land use plan and is in the public interest.
Yes, it'd be good, go ahead.
With that, any discussion from the board on the statement of reasonableness, the future land use plan?
And there is a draft motion stated there in exhibit two.
We'll entertain a motion.
Yes, sir.
This statement mentioned listed conditions, those would include discuss tonight?
Yes, those would be the amended condition.
Okay.
Having worked with the planning and zoning board over a period of many months, sitting in on meetings and working with the draft rezoning program that we've done, yeah, I don't know if this is reasonable in, in the public interest, to be honest with you. We worked awfully hard to try to get that zoning ordinance. And I just think that we're opening, we're opening the door to have all kinds of questions. Yeah, I'm, I'm not in favor of making a motion to accept this as reasonable and in the.
Thank you, Sledge. Other questions or other comments about this statement?
I'll say that as, as amended, again, as amended tonight, I understand the concerns of the sledge and Alderman, Alderwoman sledge, and I, but I do believe what we have done tonight strikes a balance between protecting the interest of Spencer and the property owners and the appearance of Spencer, and promoting business. Hearing from Mr. King, it sounds like he has big plans. And again, I think being picky is prudent, being, there is a balance between, and I believe this strikes a delicate balance.
All right, hearing none, or anyone on the board wishing to make a motion one way or the other on this particular statement?
Mr. Mayor, subject to the, again, the amendment discussed tonight, I approve this.
There is a motion now on the floor.
I'll second it.
And a second by Mr. Moore. Any further? All right, all in favor? That's five, four, all opposed, one opposed. That motion carries, thank you. All right.
All righty.
Mr. Harris, thank you for your work on this. I know you've spent quite a bit of time.
Are there, are there any final questions about how this will be implemented, or what will happen moving forward? What I will do at the staff level is, we will go in and make those recommended changes to the language of the conditions and limitations, and then we will work with the property owner and Mr. King, make sure that everything is accepted and abided by moving forward.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item is item 15. We will consider authorizing staff to apply for a T-Mobile hometown grant for the Eighth Street Ballpark. And with that, we'll invite Mr. Joe Morris forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Alderman. In the interest of brevity, I'll briefly mention that we are seeking authorization to apply for a T-Mobile hometown grant renovations of Eighth Street Park. In our staff meeting today, I promised to the town manager I'd do copies of the budget. I promptly left them on my printer, but I'll go over it to the best of my ability. The, the T-Mobile hometown grant program is essentially a program that's sponsored by T-Mobile, which is of course a national, if not global, cellular service provider. They have committed to a huge investment into small towns across the country. This is an ongoing grant program that I believe is for five years. The grants are for up to $50,000. They are specifically interested in shovel-ready projects that can be used to augment public gathering spaces in your community. And so with some conversation, I was able to discover that Eighth Street Ballpark is a very important public site that is in need of improvement. And so I worked with Mr. Taylor and Mr. Wes, Wes Thompson, who was with the, the youth baseball league, Kyle Ripken League, and we came up with a proposal for a grant that doesn't quite hit 50,000, but I think it's 49,500 and something. But the, the idea is to replace the metal roof on the grandstand, pressure wash everything, to paint the grandstand, the, the metal components, which I found out was built from the steel liners of steam engines, which is fascinating to hear, and then also to restain all the decking in the, the grandstand, to renovate the turf areas of both ball fields, to improve the surface of the parking lots, to do some landscaping, new signage for the ballpark, perhaps integrating our new town branding and logo. And finally, the, the biggest item in all of that would be to install a new playground apparatus at the park, which could be as much as $20,000. So there would be a lot of aesthetic improvements to concession stands and restroom facilities as well. So those were the, the components. It does come up to a little over $49,000. The grant is due by the end of the year, and with your permission and authorization, I will submit the, the grant application immediately.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morris. Other questions? All right, any discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to allow staff to apply for this grant?
So move.
I'll try not to laugh into, into the microphone. All right, Mr. Morgan, you get that one. For a second. Second by Mayor Protem. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Get on with it.
All opposed? All right, very good. That is approved. Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Be quick about it.
All right, we'll move to departmental reports, and with that, we, let's, let's bring our code enforcement report up. Go ahead and do that, Mr. Harris, I see he's out right now. Catch up with him shortly.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow board members. I'd give you my report for the month of November. Had a total cases of seven. Six were opened at the time this was closed and when was abated, excuse me, which was voluntarily abated. At the time, I had 424 cases for the total for the year at the time, and had seven liens, notice of liens that I submitted to homeowners, that I believe I submitted to the tax office, excuse me, or that's file, excuse me. And I've been working on case reconciliation for the month, that's why my numbers are a little low, been trying to get my caseload down. I had 80 open cases, and I apologize, I believe I don't have those numbers in there for you, but I had 80 open cases for the, for the total of the year so far. So I've been trying to work my caseload down towards the end of the year, trying to keep from carrying over so many cases. So that's been my focus for the past month or so. Also, the code enforcement citizen portal was complete. That has been in the hands of the town manager, and he's working with the IT guys, get it on the website, and get it out to the public.
So that's an opportunity for our public on the web to be able to report complaints?
Correct, and any complaints that they make will go directly into my I-Works, goes directly into a pending status, so that way it's visible to me to see, to attend. So all the information, they put directly to me. Well, within that portal, there's actually three sections on the portal. So there's code enforcement, there's also permitting, and there is a, what they call citizen engagement section on there, where people can report an issue. That's how it's labeled, called report an issue, and it has a drop-down list of different items that would be closely related to their issues. And within that system, Mr. Taylor and myself would be able to get a note, we'd actually get notified via email, excuse me, that there was something that was submitted, and then we would go review it and then export it to the appropriate department, whether it be code or the public works. So that it gives two avenues for complaints for people, whether it be directly to code enforcement or through the citizen engagement. Now it also gives them, I just want to put that out there too, it also allows citizens to upload photographs. So it's not just simply text, it's photographs as well.
And not to put you on the spot, but this question about workload and caseload and the amount of workload that you have, with the amount of cases that we have, not necessarily just open, but that need to be addressed in Spencer, what is your opinion? Been working and you've, you've seen it, what is your opinion on staffing? Is it too much to expect one individual to be able to cope with all of them?
Good question. There is a lot out there, there's a lot. That's what keeps me quite busy, in my personal opinion, especially how long does it take to get to where people want to be? What, what is clean to people? And so if it's minimum housing, or if it's backyards, or if it's junk vehicles laying around, those type of things in backyards, there's a lot of things that you can address with an additional person. It could make a bit, it could make an impact. But also, land management before was also kind of working in that, like land manager, manager director was actually working in that capacity at one time too, so, from what I understand. So that individual was kind of doubling up in the past, so from what I understand, there was two or three people within that realm altogether, land management, code enforcement, full-time and part-time. And it might have been even a fourth, a part-time code enforcement. I'm not real clear on all the aspects of it was in the past, but I don't think that it would be a bad thing if the town could afford that. With the I-Work system, it would, it would make things so much easier for people on the street to do things while making phone calls and, and back in office and working with landowners and various things. So it would put a little more pressure on the town from that aspect to start pushing on certain things, yeah.
So I would suggest to the board, Peter, that this be something we take up at our session early in the year, just to kind of talk through, I guess, standard of care when it comes to code enforcement and what, what we are going forward.
I would say when I tell people that I've had 430 cases this year.
A lot.
It's a lot of cases, so people kind of, wow, that's a lot. And so, and there's a lot more out there. I mean, this is, there's longevity in this job, I would say. And so I think that what people really want is a town to be proud of, and I, and I, as a resident of this town, I agree, and I'd like to have people that care about their property. But with 50, nearly 50% of the homeowners in town are landlords, sometimes that becomes very cumbersome to try and get landlords to move in that way. So it, it takes time to work with landlords and property managers to get minimum housing issues, but I personally, I think is a big deal, minimum housing. So I'm sensitive to the trash and the junk yards and that stuff, but I think minimum housing is a bigger deal to me, because I think standard of living versus the way people's yards sometimes can be easily cleaned up. I think the minimum housing seems to be my, my focus here, especially lately, because I'm starting to see more and more about how people are living within homes, so I'm trying to focus on that. And so if there's people that think that, you know, I'm not quite on the job because there's trash in yards, I apologize, but I'm trying to help people get their homes to standard that, that suits them, that they deserve, deserve quality, that's what I'm trying to focus on.
Ross, or any other question?
Thank you for what you're doing. I know this doesn't fall in your category. These open cases, they don't like you. Anything they need? Use contact.
Some of them, some of them are slow, yeah, some are slow to get on those, and I'm trying to close on some of those. That's, once again, that's some of my focus, to try and go back on some of these leftover cases that are lingering and behind, and just these ankle biters.
I believe that, here ago at this time, the, the prior year open cases listing was quite lengthy and dwindled.
Yeah, I believe I'm a little under 70 open cases at this present moment. I think around 68, I think is where I'm at, so I was able to do it down from about 82, 83 to about 68, is where I'm at right now. I'm not so certain on the numbers, but it's about where it's at. And so I've been kind of really trying to focus on that. I know the older cases have been lingering, and I, I understand those are things that I need to focus a little bit more on and try and clear those up, so.
Mr. Roswell, I'm sorry. This, a statement was made earlier. This, a statement was made earlier, longer than I'd let, but after.
No, ma'am, no. I send certified letters to individuals if I can't reach them either at their door or if I can find their phone number. Sometimes I do some legwork to get numbers, but I've kind of backed away from that. But most of the time, I send certified letters if I can.
So the first attempt is first?
That is correct.
Don't read.
It's usually a knock on the door and ask them if they're home and they're not, or if it's an abandoned building, or not abandoned, but nobody's there, that type of stuff, maybe they're gone. I send the letter out.
So what do you do? Interfacing? Or have a written?
No, usually it's verbal. Usually it's a verbal, hey, look, I'm contacting you because I have this situation and I see on your property. And I try to approach them face to face.
Yeah, so for some reason that they don't, rather they come back. They say, I don't remember. We don't have any type of actual talk.
Well, I put it in the mind, it's within I-Works, and all that stuff would be.
That's, that's.
Yeah, they should be, yeah, should be memorializing those conversations at the time, and then follow-up communication should include pursuant to our conversation on this date. I mean, there should be a trail that references those conversations and what was said.
That's, I guess, the question.
Yes, yes, I do transcribe all my conversations, to the best of my recollection, into the notes within I-Works for that particular case, yes.
Other question?
This relates to, I don't know, my team, but it relates to you, these property liens and everything else. Were you having any success with getting these property liens paid?
Occasionally, we get some folks that'll pay, and a lot of it gets paid through transactions of property. So if somebody purchases a property, those things get covered through that most of the time. They are notifying the town from the tax office when they get paid off, but it usually goes to the finance officer's husband doing. Recently, they get notification of them, and it gets forwarded to me from the finance officer. And then I'll follow up with it. So if it's been paid off, I'll have to go through and make sure that comes out of the clerk of court's office, and it's no longer on record because sometimes that lingers. And when attorneys get involved in property purchases, that's where they go straight to, is clerk of courts. And so if it's still lingering, becomes a hassle to try and clear up. So I try to make sure that's done really quickly, that doesn't linger.
The other question? Thank you, Ross, thanks for your work. All right, Mr. Harris, bring you up for planning.
So I will speak to a couple of pretty exciting updates. Let me begin by talking about our Hometown Innovation Grant Program. As y'all will remember, the Salisbury Community Development Corporation applied for a Duke Energy Foundation grant on behalf of the town and received an additional $25,000 for facade grants, storefront improvements for commercial properties in Spencer, and the town board adopted an additional $10,000 for that program. So in this Hometown Innovation Grant process, we had $35,000 to award to facade applications. The HPC and the CAC met last night in a combined meeting to review the 22 applications that we received, and they made a recommendation for how to distribute those funds to projects. So at your meeting in January, I will present the recommendation of the CAC on how those funds should be spent. We received a lot of great projects. There's a lot of interesting proposals that we will see come to fruition, both downtown and across our commercial corridor. We actually received requests for funding that far surpassed the budget, given the amount of interest we got in the program. We received almost all told $100,000 in requests. Of course, we only had $35,000 available, but the CAC recommended to distribute those funds in a way that we thought reflected the quality of the project that they were applying for. In many cases, these were facade improvements that included new pedestrian streetscape amenities, lighting, signage, outdoor furniture. I think we'll see a lot of interesting things happening next year. We are also planning on submitting to the planning board in January various amendments to the development ordinance. These include changes to the sign ordinance, and then we will also talk about some changes to parking regulations. Those probably will not be ready until February or so. But with the sign ordinance, what we found with the new development ordinance we adopted in July, that temporary signs were allowed up to an unreasonable square footage. So that's why you saw a number of, in this case, political signage that seemed to be unreasonably large. And so what we're planning on doing is amending this so that for the primary season coming up in 2022, we will max out those types of temporary freestanding signs, which in most cases are those political signs, at probably around four to six square feet, depending on the zoning district. Do y'all have any questions about that? I do, I know that it was an issue, it did come up, the fact that there were proliferation of large political signs on Salisbury Avenue, so we are going to address that for the next primary season. Additionally, I will say with zoning permits, we have seen a continued healthy growth of the town with new development.
Well, I'll say, do you still have preferential interest?
Yeah, it's, we're continuing to see a lot of interest from the development community. So even today, I approved preliminary plats for two subdivisions, two major subdivisions. In one case, there are going to be four new houses built on Whitehead, and in the other case, on Meadow Street, there are going to be six new houses built. So I approved the preliminary plats today. The developers will be required to submit construction plans because there are infrastructure improvements required for a major subdivision, including sidewalks and street trees and the like. Other than that, do y'all have any additional questions for me?
Question, Kyle? Kyle, I see you have something on here with a cycling competition permit. Is that about?
Yes, so the pedal factory in Salisbury is planning at some point next year. This says spring, but it's really going to be spring, summer. There's going to be some sort of cycling competition that I'm working with them on. They've applied for it, so they're getting in early, and I appreciate that. They're getting their application for road closures in early, so we have plenty of time to make sure, in terms of public safety, we can secure the route, work with our public works department, and our police and fire to make sure that the route is secure.
Other question?
How many of the 22 applicants were you able to fund?
So in this case, the CAC recommended to fund about 15 of them. Seven of them, the CAC determined, did not rise to the level. Just given we had such limited funds and given the amount of application requests we received, seven of the applications that were the lowest scoring applications that did not demonstrate creativity or transformation, which was the intent of the program, then there was a cutoff. So seven of them were denied.
Mr. Harris, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, next is our police department report. Sergeant Leonard, I assume you're doing that this evening?
Yes, sir, and I will apologize in advance. I know y'all are used to getting the stats and everything, you know, we're all kind of in transition right now. So I'm stepping in for Sergeant File, who cannot be here tonight. He's actually out with COVID, so keep him in your prayers. He told me today he's experiencing pneumonia with it now, so I've been there and done that, so I know what he's going through. So mainly, I'm here to answer questions. I'll be glad to, about anything that's going on inside the police department, and to the best of my ability, answering any questions you may have.
Sergeant File, read in the paper or saw something on there, or that?
Absolutely. Last night, about 5:30, Officer Woodward was on his way into work. He actually resides on East 22nd Street in Kannaples. He was on his way to work, and a young lady turned in front of him. He attempted and tried his best to avoid her, but was unable to avoid her. And she turned into his lane of travel, and he did hit her. Went out to the scene last night when I was called, was with him till about 11:30 last night, made sure he got medical treatment. We took him down to Atrium Hospital. He was checked out. They did release him. He's home recovering. He's actually supposed to be working tonight, so I told him no, he was not going to be working. He's too sore, so I'm here working for him, and Officer Brown, so he's going to take a couple of days off and recover and get back to full steam ahead, so.
Maybe you can answer this, maybe. How many people, how many off?
So from, I will speak from where we, I think we're at 14 positions, is that correct? Is, we're allocated 14 things?
14, 14.
As of right now, and I will, excuse me, I have to do the math here in my head, but myself, Officer Brown, who is still in field training, he's got about a month left, and he'll be out on his own. Then we have Officer Woodward, and Officer Comer. The four of us are, I guess technically, what you have assigned to patrol right now. Then we have Officer Smith, who we're awaiting, he's going to the school as SRO, and when Officer Niblock comes out of the school, he'll be coming to the road. So whenever that change is able to take place. So, so Niblock, Reep, Detective File, so at this point, we have, am I forgetting somebody? We have, basically, we're down 50%.
I guess, Mr. File's working with the county as far as they can.
Yes, and the contract with the county is going extremely well. We've had a lot of interest. All the guys have been, you know, deputies have been willing to pitch in help. I actually received the schedule today from Lieutenant Duffel at the county, who was actually looking after the contract and getting the guys lined up, and he's already filled his schedule for January, so I think 15 more days in January.
No problems with two different.
No, and actually, what we have done, when, when we decided, or we found out we were going this route, me and Sergeant File met, and I said, well, I really feel like the best thing is going to be if I go to an offset schedule. So myself and Officer Brown, while he's in training, we're working a one-day offset schedule. So instead of working, typically, we would work Monday, Tuesday, we work Tuesday, Wednesday. So that opened, doing that opened up the availability to both sides. All of the teams at the sheriff's office have the availability to be able to sign up for time, because it opened, going to that offset schedule opened it up, so, and we've got participation from everybody, they help us out a great deal.
Mr. File's still in the office?
Yes, he's in the office right now, yeah. I'm a...
Anybody else in the office besides him? Everybody else is on?
I'm in the office on my days off. I come in on my days off and do payroll, train, or do our time sheets, or train, and so I was actually here yesterday for seven hours on my day off doing stuff, and so, but I come in and do that when I'm not working patrol. But no, right now, he's the only one that's assigned to the office.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Very welcome, very welcome.
So, Peter, I guess a question for you on the hiring front. Where are we in posting for openings and applications? Are we making progress on that front?
We've started receiving some applications for officers. We talked a little last week. I am awaiting some information on our chief search process, our finance officer's search process, and also, same proposal will be for an online portal and social media pushes for our job postings and such. So that will allow us to step it up even further.
But we are getting applications for patrol officers.
In the last week or so, we've received several applications for that.
Good, and my assumption is that with Detective File, and you, like, we're vetting those now so that we can go ahead and fill vacancies even before.
Who are?
Before, before we, if for some reason we have candidates, before we would happen to have a new police chief.
As we...
We're not going to delay that process until...
No, we, I mean, we want to, we want to identify some folks to, to, or going through a process for a police officer based on what we've already, we wouldn't just wait until we get a new chief.
What is our policy on rehiring individuals who may have worked for us?
That's, that's certainly an option. Town's personnel policies would certainly provide for that.
And what does Ms. Moore do, Susan?
Ms. Moore keeps us going. She, she actually does, she does all of our report entries. She enters all our citations in that goes to state, she sends all her numbers up, she does all her, anything clerical in the office that we need done, and she's been a big help to me, because a part of my responsibilities is putting together new hire packets, hopefully for new hires to be coming in, and I can forward that stuff to her while I'm out on patrol doing things, and she puts all that together. Does a great deal of stuff inside the office, and I couldn't even begin to tell you probably what all she did to help Chief James, because, like, you know, communicate more. But I know entering in citations, entering in, she reviews our reports and that stuff that takes a great deal of strain off of the patrol supervisors that have to do, she does that for us. And she's also serves as our backup evidence custodian too, she helps Mr. File with it.
You mentioned payroll, and I just wondered if that's something you could...
In the end, long-term, I'm sure it probably would be. I don't know that right now, her schedule at 30 hours a week would probably allow her enough time. Our time sheets, and it of herself, are about a six-hour a week, or a six-hour process just to do it when it comes to our 28-day cycle, because our payroll's different. So it requires a little bit of time, but I don't know if she's got enough time in her schedule to do it. And she is out sick too, by the way, so just keep her in your prayers too.
Thank you for doing what you did for Chief James.
Very welcome, very welcome. Honored to be able to be here. I was honored to be able to be here.
From a recruiting standpoint, anything the board can be doing?
Uh, you know, I mean...
Word of mouth?
Oh, yeah, word of mouth, that's the big thing. Like I said, as Peter said, I do know that we've had several applications over the last few weeks. I know that one of which is a, actually a female that was in Mr. Brown's BLET class, who's actually came to us. I think File has been working on that, and I think he spoke with somebody about, you know, about her, but, you know, his intentions are to go into, I know he's made contact, me and him kind of decided amongst ourselves, but we hadn't had a chance to talk to Peter yet, because everything's so crazy. But he took two community colleges, and I've taken two community colleges. So he's going to go to Mitchell and Stanley, and I'm going to do Rowan and Davidson. We're going to bombard their BLET classes and see who we can pull out of there, because they've got active classes now going on. So that's something we have talked about amongst ourselves, me and him. So Davidson, that was my old stomping ground back in the day, I know everybody over there, so I've been an instructor there for years. So I'm going to go over and talk to those guys, and Rowan, he's going to handle Stanley and Mitchell, so, but we are moving forward with that, so.
I appreciate you going above and beyond to do that, because I know you have a bunch of other things on your hands right now.
Well, that's okay.
But that's the thing, you got to do it for help to be on the way, so.
That's right.
Thank you. Other question? All right, stay safe out there.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
All right, Chief Lanning, Fire Department report.
Mayor, Board, how are y'all this afternoon?
Good, how are you?
I cannot complain.
By the way, it's past that.
Tonight.
I think we crossed over that threshold a while ago.
I agree. I agree. So just hit on a couple of things. I know we have discussed the surplus of the latter. I've been in contact with both Rowan Cabares and the Transportation Museum, seemingly up to this point, both are dead ends. The museum has not came out and said, hey, we do not want your truck, but they have pointed out that it's neither historic nor antique. So they've taken pictures.
It'll be historic and antique sometime.
Eventually, if it sits for long enough, it will be. So I'm kind of, we're to stand still with that.
So you didn't take my advice and haul it out to I-5 in hopes that somebody would steal it?
Well, you know...
Or drop it off in Mr. Morgan's driveway.
Yeah.
You can park it in his backyard.
I mean, I believe I can make it across, I take it to Spencer and drop it off at Holmes. I don't know what we'll get for it, but...
Mr. Holmes.
Oh, absolutely. So there's really no true update with that. Obviously, I know we had kind of proceeded with the spec process, or beginning that process for an engine. Pierce or Atlantic Fire Apparatus did drop off the drawings to me yesterday, so I guess that's kind of maybe a me or Peter thing, or a board's discretion is how you want us to proceed with that from this point. But we've kind of got an ideal of what would a new engine for Spencer Fire Department look like, what would we need it to have and not have. So we're to that point now, so that is a positive. The Coffee with the Fire Chief was canceled. But we've kind of got a ideal of what would a, a new engine for Spencer Fire Department look like? What would we need it to have and not have? So we're to that point now. Um, so that is a positive. The coffee with the fire chief was canceled for this morning. Um, I had a pre-existing meeting in Winston that I completely forgot about. Uh, but our next one will be January eleventh at nine AM.
I was disappointed when I showed up in.
Did you?
No, I had it on my calendar. Unfortunately I had.
It will definitely be there for the, uh, eleventh of January.
Will there be any donuts?
There was donuts last time. You said you wanted them and I bought them and Peter showed up.
He ate mine.
Um, the only other thing and me and Mr. Franz, he said, had briefly discussed this. You know, we enacted a, a town or local burn ban, um, once the county, the state had done the same thing. We, I pushed one out just to cover us and the basis that those two did not. Um, was later brought to my attention as something that City of Salisbury has began doing, um, is the fire chief has the authority to do a civil citation in terms of violating the fire lane, um, illegal burning, parking within fifteen feet of a fire hydrant. So I've got copies of Salisbury's, got copies of our current one. The problem that we found in, in discussing this was there was nothing in the budget in terms of fees for that. Um, plus I think the fee amount is outdated. Um, I know again Salisbury last year went and updated theirs from a five dollar penalty. Um, personally it, I don't think five dollars is going to deter anybody from doing one way or the other, um, to a fifty dollar. Um, and I, I know me recently, anytime I go to the shopping center down there, food line, people will, will literally park in the fire lane, turn their vehicle off, go in and shop. And, and it's from one end to the other. Has it been a true issue yet? No. Um, but obviously there's going to be a day where we need to put an apparatus there and we can't. Um, an alternative for that is to push the vehicle out of the way. So my hopes is, um, with y'all's blessing was, would be for me and Peter to proceed with maybe changing those fees or getting those added, um, to where I will have that flexibility to enforce those.
In other words, an amendment to the fee schedule, uh, I, I believe there's, was an old fee book, uh, that.
Yeah, PD currently has a, has a fee book, but, um.
Reflect that.
It's, it's outdated and I would like to make one just specific to me as the fire chief where it doesn't cover parking and handicap, things it doesn't have to do with fire protection or fire safety. I don't, it's kind of out of my realm. So.
Comments from the board? I think it's less about the fees and more about making sure that folks are aware of the importance of.
Absolutely.
Not, um, being in the way of our first responders.
Any questions for me?
Keep up the good work.
So you'd asked me before I made the schedule for January. I told you it was looking amazing. Um, so, well, the problem we ran into is obviously we withheld to the nine hundred ninety-nine hours. We've had that discussion before. Um, and we've added five or six in the last couple of months, which was amazing. But I could kind of use and abuse them the last two months of my schedule. It could work more than six shifts a month. Um, cause they weren't going to reach that cap. So obviously now going back into January, having to space that out, six shifts a month, nothing more. Um, to be able to use them for the full twelve months. Uh, I'm back to five or six days around there by myself. It's not ideal, but we'll make it work to figure out a permanent better solution.
So yet another item for us to add to our strategic planning agenda. That's going to be staffing, just I think across the board. Staffing, recruiting, retention. Um, but then the other, I think we probably want to at that meeting, go ahead and add the discussion on truck, new engine, be able to, uh, start to figure out a path forward with that financial planning.
Yes. And I know last year we had discussed it and then timing was bad and just realizing some things and under past administration that was not done. End of January, beginning of February, the safer grant through FEMA should open back up. Um, and again, that's, it's a step process. But the first couple of years we could, what if, let's say we put in for three personnel, it's free to us. And then over time, more and more we're responsible for it. But I know I'd got y'all's blessing to do that last year. So that would be my hope this year is to proceed with that and hope it will be successful. Do you have nothing else for me?
Thank you, sir.
Sit down. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much for what you do.
Watch that poll.
Our chief. Chief, I brought, I brought up the issue of that poll. I said it was going to get in the way. I just didn't think people were going to run into it.
Pad and around it or something like that.
All right, Mr. Taylor.
He hits the poll. We might shake a little bit.
If we just had it upstairs, the fire department could use that to come.
Want to use, want to use. Uh, good evening, mayor, members of the board. Welcome to our two new members of the board. Um, if you don't know me, I'm Joel, Public Works Director. So, um, our, for this month, uh, our regular services are running on schedule. From Thanksgiving, we had a little trouble with one leaf facts. Chad has actually got our leaf fact running. It's not perfect, but it, it will work until we get parts. So basically it's locked in gear. Nothing else we could do with it. So it will work. It's just when you start it and stop it, it's in gear. There is no relief. So, um, so we have been picking up leaves with it until we can get something. So we are catching up by the end of this week. I hope to be back on schedule. Uh, we should be back to where we're supposed to be. Um, trash service, uh, for Christmas holiday. Uh, after reading this, this, what was here is just a little confusing. So, um, we are off Friday and Monday for Thanksgiving, I mean, for Christmas. So stuck at Thanksgiving, uh, for Christmas. So, uh, we will be off Friday before, which won't interfere with anything trash service. The Monday we'll interfere with trash service. It will just be slid one day. Um, that only gives us Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, cause we're off on Friday for New Year's. So we have three days to, to collect trash that week, which will be pushing it in itself, but we'll get that done. But there won't be a bulky that. Any questions about that? I didn't want to.
Just a lot. Cause you're going to have Christmas trash too.
It's going to be a big week that week too. I mean, normally it doubles, uh, on the week after thing, after Christmas. We get big week. What are you saying, Sam?
I was saying you could send the bulk items to his house.
Okay, I'll go to Stephen.
Fire truck to Sam's house.
Extra, extra bulkies. Okay. All right. And the, uh, the leaf fact, the leaf fact will continue to run through the end of the year. Since New Year's falls on Saturday, we're going to run it the week after. Um, and if weather interrupts some of that, it may go a little bit longer. We'll just kind of play it by ear and see how many get put out right at the end. Um, we had several, uh, sections or, uh, we, uh, the town, we had several sections of sidewalk fixed, uh, that's been needed fixed for a good while. Uh, above Jefferson on Salisbury Avenue, there were several places that were broken, chunked out. So we got those fixed. Down Eleventh Street in front of the business, uh, we got those fixed. And then I believe Kyle, we were, the other ramps were not since being here until January, right? Wasn't that the discussion we had? They've done multiple.
They've been busy.
Oh, there's a lot of it. So, um, the last word we heard, they were going to be, it was going to be after the first of the year before they were going to be getting them done. Cause we checked to make sure it wasn't going to interfere with the parade. Um, they're already doing them and they're completing them. So we're getting, we, I put in here that we were going to get two, because that was the only two we knew about. There's actually about seven that's been done so far. And there may be more coming. Um, I just don't know. The contractor didn't know. And he says, I only get a certain list. But there may be more coming down the line. I mean, we applied for everything we could get. And there may be others. So just want to let you know that that work was being done. Um, the project that was scheduled on Seventeenth Street, uh, at the time that I gave you this report, it was still on hold because we didn't have the parts. Uh, I'm happy to tell you that it is complete. Uh, everything is done except one little spot that is still going to need to be doing some drying up. So if you see that spot, that's not seeded, not sprawled. It's because that's what's the last place to start to dry up. Everything else is drying up. Everything's going well. And the little rain shower didn't help you many. So, um, but yeah, all that's done. The driveway is poured back, pipes in, it's running, everything's good. It looks good. So, oh, that is complete now. It's, it's on the end. Um, the C cap project, that would be the last thing that I have. Uh, the C cap project, still trying to make, uh, contact with that one homeowner. Um, I've got a tentative packet together. Uh, we're going to do what we had spoke about mayor, about just sending a certified packet and then get it to that homeowner. And hopefully at that point they will may reach out to us, uh, and we can schedule this meeting. I mean, we're, we're on board with everybody but that one individual. Um, and soon as that goes, Cindy's on board. So as soon as it comes, we can set this meeting up and get this thing going. We want to do it. And hopefully right after the first of the year. So, uh, that's all I have. Anybody have any questions?
Any word from Duke Energy as to when they're going to address the street, street lights, the parking lights for our parking lot?
I do not know. I do know that Keith, uh, Whale sent an email, was it yesterday or today? One day, uh, and was trying to get back up with the Duke Energy people to get back in touch with us. So that's where we stand. I don't know a date. I don't know anything other than.
Well, I want to take this opportunity again to thank you, Chad, rest the crew that work Winterfest. You worked your backside. Uh, we really appreciate it, everything that you did.
You're welcome. I'm glad the event went well, other than our little weather innuendo. But you know, over a two week span in December, you kind of got to shoot for one day, you're going to get bad weather. But, um, but we were fortunate.
This year when it's like the first rain we've had in.
In like six months.
And the chocolate melted on the first day.
Seventy degrees the first day and then cold and raining the next one. So it's, it worked out well. But no, it was a great event. Everything's working good. We're still in the process of getting the parking lot cleaned up. It's coming. Moving along. Thank y'all for y'all's help. Mr. Miller and Sam helping with the tree. So.
Marking the parking lot.
Marking the parking lot.
Roofing the hut.
Through all the, through all.
Mayor Williams was, was personally wrestling, uh, all fifty of those live trees that got put up as well.
Little sap.
Little sap. Christmas tree ring. For sure.
Yeah, she was. All this lighting. That part of this building?
No, sir. It's completely separate.
But the deal is they, they come in, they put them, they put them in because we pay for the power.
Mm-hmm.
That's.
Yes, sir.
It, it's a safety concern for patrons of businesses, for our staff here.
Agreed.
Um, and then there are a lot of people that use that parking lot. I mean, I know that there's some folks that actually use it as a place for, um, carpool pickup tools.
Correct.
I mean, at night, like they are right now.
Yeah.
Events. Like I said, I can't stress. The Duke Energy eat on there.
Okay. We've been attempting to do this since when?
April.
April.
And I think it would be good to remind them of that.
Well, like I said, I'd rather.
There's a, there's a time that we got to stop being nice about it.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
Can't let it linger. You need to keep on, keep on there.
I'll make a phone call to Mr. Welch and see what he advises me to do at this point.
Mr. Welch told me, we talked about it. He, he, he told me he was going to get back on there about it. But I, he told me that, um, gentleman who started the project retired and didn't have the information on IDL. So.
And, and so we were able to, uh, Mr. Welch got us in touch with, uh, uh, their regional lighting manager is actually based out of Salisbury area. And that person, uh, went at that point jumped on it quickly. We got, we started over again and then we're now still waiting here, here back to them. So.
Yeah, we sent it off for a study for, to make sure we're getting the appropriate lighting for that parking lot and, and installed on us again.
I'll give, I'll give Randy a call too.
Okay. We'll, I'll give him. Okay, no problem. Anything else?
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Finance report.
Yes, so, uh, it's, it is provided in, in the packet. Uh, things appear to be, uh, on track as they should for this time of year. And are there any particular questions?
I guess I noticed revenue is a little ahead of plan this time of year and expenses are a little behind plan.
Yeah, and on average I'd say it's on track. I mean, our, our sale, our, uh, property tax revenues in theory are, I think they were in the seventy percent range. Uh, they're actually due by January. So you kind of have a compressed collection window where you, uh, really between September and January, you're, you're supposed to be collecting most of that. So, uh, and then it, but yes, so things are, things are on track.
I'm going to see. And this is, this is, I'd like to see, I know it hasn't started yet in the future. So we know how.
We're basically breaking out the county, what we're paying for the county. So we have an idea.
So we can see.
We can find a way to provide that information.
Yeah, that's a good, good suggestion. All right. Any other questions on finance? All right, hearing none. Now move to the library.
Good evening, Mayor and Board Member.
Good evening.
Um, the library was able to host two main events, um, highlighting some of the local children authors here in, um, Rowan County or the town of Spencer. And, um, SCMA Academy, um, continues to visit over through our library. Um, and Beverly McCraw is our librarian. She was here and she was recognized for the five years of, um, service. I'm just bringing it up for the new members, um, that are here. So she was here in present. Um, and she's been very, um, vocal and, um, very supportive of the things that are occurring at the library. So do you guys have any questions?
Questions from the board? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Graban. And with that, we'll move to the town manager report.
Thank you, Mayor and, uh, members of the board. Welcome, welcome back and welcome to our new members. And, and certainly, uh, echo the statements that Mayor Williams made earlier about our outgoing members. It's been a pleasure to work with, with, uh, everyone and I appreciate y'all, uh, as a group giving me a chance to be here and look forward to working with the group going forward. So, uh, a, a time of transition, but, uh, looking, we're on, we're in a good, uh, trajectory because of the work that's happened over the last few years and, uh, looking forward to continuing that. Uh, I certainly want to continue talking about how much appreciation is deserved, uh, around here related to what's happened with Winterfest, um, and all the things around it. There's been all sorts of, uh, teamwork and collaboration happening all across the staff. Uh, and then of course with all the volunteers, our elected officials. I mean, this has really been a community effort to let Spencer shine a little bit over the last weeks. And I think a lot of hard work has paid off, but, uh, I certainly am proud of the work the staff has done, uh, to be a part of that and, and appreciate that. And I, I think our event here on the third to open up the, the town hall, uh, to the public, uh, staff did a great job putting that together as well. Um, and so it's exciting to finally be in this space that we've talked about as a community for so many years. But certainly over the last year, we've been talking about it and getting to this point. It's special. We're looking forward to our move, uh, which is going to be, uh, starting over the next few days. By the end of the day, Thursday, we hope to be functioning out of this building versus, uh, the building on Sixth Street. So, uh, bear with us, uh, Thursday morning. We're, we're going to be out of commission for a few hours while servers get moved. That means we won't have phones and that sort of thing. So, uh, the goal is by the end of the day, Thursday, though, things are back up to speed and, uh, we can assist the community out of this building. I would certainly want to mention, uh, back to the volunteers and the group, uh, involved that made things possible. Uh, Sherry Mason Brown in particular, who has volunteered her services to, uh, make this building, I'd say even more special than, uh, just, uh, the shell of the space that it might have been without her input onto the interior finishes and furnishings. Uh, the artwork, uh, the decorations, all of that has been, uh, really special to, to see come together. And, and it's just been a very generous outpouring from her to, uh, provide that to the town. And I certainly appreciate it. And she of course was one of the key members of the Winterfest planning group, uh, along with the, uh, her and others were mentioned earlier, but she, she has, uh, done a lot for the town and, and certainly want to express appreciation for her. Her and others were mentioned earlier, but she, she has, uh, done a lot for the town and, and certainly want to express appreciation for her. In terms of our ARP funding, uh, in our partnership with Centralina, we have, uh, uh, gotten agreement together with them for them to walk us through a process to determine a spending plan for the funding. Uh, and, uh, that will kick off with a community survey and then some facilitated discussions. Uh, that I, I think will be very helpful for us to align, uh, pandemic impacts and eligible uses. And those sorts of things to help us chart our path forward, uh, with that funding. And, uh, we've talked a bit about staffing tonight and Kyle even mentioned Steve, uh, Steve Blunt, but I'd certainly want to, uh, note that I'm, uh, uh, Steve Blunt will be joining the, the team as our, uh, planning and zoning administrator beginning in January. Uh, and, and Kyle, uh, Kyle's gonna, uh, continue to work with us more focused on, um, on a supportive role and, and focused on, uh, the historic districts and community appearance. Appreciate all that Kyle has done with us this year. Uh, and look forward to continuing to work with him there and, uh, and I think we have a lot of synergy possible with the. With the team we have, uh, of folks assisting us related to our planning efforts and. Something appreciate that. And, and Joel talks a little bit about the holiday schedule. Uh, that is, uh, in there for reference for twenty twenty-two. Uh, we've got that published. We're, we'll get that on the website as well and, and our, our next newsletter. Uh, is being printed now and will be, uh, mailed in the, uh, in the coming week or so, and it'll include the holiday schedule for twenty twenty-two as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Francis. Are there questions from the board?
I have one thing, Peter. It may have changed this afternoon. The building is still not secure. Still enter into retail space next door, straight through. Your locks are not working. Latches. Aren't working.
And Vert- Vertex was here working on the locks, um, so we'll, but we'll follow up with them and make sure. Uh, of course, uh, the major issue with our, with our locks in this building have, have to do with. Actually, the, uh, arrival of our permanent, uh, blocking system, uh, in the building.
Mike said that they had sent the wrong cylinder.
But regardless, we need to do something exterior too. Like you're right, especially if we're gonna be moving. Everything over here. Other questions, Ms. Sledge?
Peter, what's the, uh, time frame on this work with the?
The, the goal, they, they've said they look forward to kicking that off, uh, in January and I, I think it'll be a few months. Uh, you know, the first quarter of the year or so will be when all of that, uh, is happening.
For the community survey, the, uh, physical thing that we'll do or is it gonna be online?
Yeah, the, the plan is for an online survey in terms of, uh, responses. Uh, we're mailing out, of course, in the newsletter, uh, and we're. Mentioning it and asking folks to check out our website. We can have a, uh, a paper form available. An online response is, uh, the, the most, uh, desirable because of the, the way it allows the data to get, you know, crunched by Centralina, but. But that's, that's the current plan. Of course, we have to put the survey together and get some logistics worked out, but that. That was the, uh, the idea was primarily an online survey.
So they'd be available.
In terms of the, uh.
Well, if they go to the survey in January.
Yeah, and they, and they talked about, uh, the plan includes two, two facilitated discussions and so, yes, that. Um, and I think we, we could choose our, our timing for the planning session to certainly have that be a part of it. Or, uh, it could be a standalone meeting. I think part of their idea would be kind of an open, uh, community. Town hall type meeting with the community as well, so, uh, but we, we can certainly work through that.
And with that, we'll move on in urgent. Next item is to, uh, consider receiving property liens. This is attachment eleven. Uh, this is a standard procedure for the board that we've been doing this year, um, as a result of code enforcement. Uh, liens that are taking out on properties and, um, in order for, uh, us to complete that process. And, and file those, uh, appropriately so that we can actually execute those liens. The, um, down the road, um, we have to, as a board, actually, um, have an action team. Receive those. So that being the case, we didn't, we typically add this to our consent agenda, but since we do have new board members. Kept this as a standalone item so that if you had questions on the process or anything like that, we, uh, could answer. With that, are there any questions on the property liens relative to code enforcement abatement action? Hey, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve those liens? A motion? Heard a second from the sledge. All in favor? Oppose? All right, those are approved. All right, the next item is budget ordinance twenty-one dash zero two three. And this is, Peter, I'm gonna let you, you wanna give the overview of this for us real quickly?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Uh, this is a budget amendment that allows us to, uh, appropriate some funds. That were previously budgeted for the, uh, land acquisition for a future fire station expansion. Uh, that land acquisition, um, is, is no longer possible. It actually involves the same property of the subject of the rezoning earlier. Today. And so these funds that were available in the budget to repurpose for the use of, uh, purchasing a utility vehicle for the fire department along with the trailer. Uh, and the equipment to outfit that for, uh, some fire response and rescue operations, uh, that could be used. An off-road situation as well as, uh, events of the transportation museum or other places in town.
Thank you. And I know Chief Lanning presented on this on Thursday evening. So are there any further questions on this particular budget amendment?
Will other departments be able to use this vehicle?
Fire chief says yes, so that means.
Is it gonna be, I guess it's gonna be stored at the department.
It will, yeah. Um, the, the goal is for it to, um, be stored on the trailer in the bay. Obviously, as long as they have a receiver and a hitch on their pickup or a pickup truck, or if we needed to haul it to and from, for whatever reason that may be. That possibility would be there. Uh, I do know in talks with mutual aid departments, um, just in the possibility of us being approved and getting this. There's several departments that's already wanting to add us to different calls in their districts than what we were initially. Um, just for the, the, we'll have the means to access small places where larger apparatus obviously couldn't for wildfires and grass fires and such, but.
That'd be good because I was concerned about not being used now.
Sure. Absolutely. Well, and like a, you know, hydrant maintenance twice a year, that'll be nice. You know, less wear and tear and cost of.
Have a ladder on it.
Do what?
Have a ladder on it.
Okay. I've seen some like, you know, overseas where they run and just throw the ladder up and climb up it and it's falling. We could do something similar to that. It'd be pretty cool.
I don't think you will pass your, uh, OSHA, uh. Or your ISO visit.
No, not at all.
We want to keep that class two rating.
Yes. Want to improve it. Do what, man?
The quote from Leonard Aluminum, is that for the?
It is, yeah. I've received, uh, three quotes, um, for everything with the exception of the skid. The skid, there was only truly one manufacturer that, um, does that. So the Leonard was, it ended up coming in for the cheapest quote for the trailer. One with a double axle to be able to hold the weight of the, uh, machine as well as the water. Any further questions for me?
All right, hearing none.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve budget or amendment ordinance twenty-one dash zero two three?
Don't move.
The motion by Mr. Morgan? Second by Ms. Sledge? All in favor? Right, all opposed? And that is approved. And the next item is resolution twenty-one dash zero three zero specifying the town manager authority. Related to contracting bidding surplus property and settling claims. This is attachment fourteen in your agenda material. And I will preface this by saying, we have for, I guess, many years been operating under an unwritten. Kind of rule of, uh, kind of a ten thousand dollar threshold for contracts, so anything less than that, town manager. Could authorize on their own. Anything above that had to come before the town board. But, uh, up until that point, it's just been an unwritten rule. There's been no formal policy on that. And so my understanding is Peter is bringing us a resolution to consider that would actually outline. The contracting bidding surplus property and settling claim authority, um, and the specific thresholds, dollar amount thresholds. Uh, for those actions relative to what town manager could authorize without board consideration and what, uh, would have to have board approval. Peter, anything else you want to add on that?
That was a, a good summary, Mayor. I appreciate that. It's a, it's an effort at, uh, good governance. Where the general statutes, uh, allow this sort of delegation to happen. It's also in line with, uh, the purchasing laws for the state and contracting thresholds. Uh, the, the thresholds in this presented resolution are at or below those established by state law. Related to certain types of purchasing processes. And, and so I, I don't know how much detail you want me to, to go through and talking through it, but, uh, this is. Got a, a number of points and. For example, where the first one where it says, uh, in contracts involving informal bids of up to fifty thousand dollars for construction projects. Budgeted in an annual budget ordinance. You know, that's, that's an example. And that's pretty specific and that's, that's a limit, uh, so that if we had a, uh, construction project. Budgeted where we wanted to build a park shelter and we thought it was gonna. Cost twenty-five thousand dollars. This would allow. Following our, an informal purchasing process, then for us to use that and award a contract to the. For the appropriate vendor for that.
Yeah, approve the budget that outlines that project.
In this particular, uh, example, other examples include, uh, you know, maintenance contracts. Service for HVAC equipment. Professional engineering services below the, uh, actually well below the mini Brooks exemption limit. Those sorts of things.
Everybody. Explain it as a professional engineer. Now, since the Brooks Act is based, it's based on the. It's based on the federal Brooks Act, that the federal Brooks Act requires that any federal agency. Um, the procurement, federal procurement law requires that you go out for professional services like engineering or architectural services. That those, um, have to be based on qualifications-based selection, not, uh, price-based selection. You can't go out to an engineering company if it's over a specific threshold and request. Them to provide you quotes and you base your selection based on who has the best price. Has to be based on who has the best qualifications. So price cannot be a component of the process. And so North Carolina adopted something similar. It's called the Mini Brooks Act because it's a scaled down version of the Federal Brooks Act. And it applies to professional services like engineering, architecture. So. If it's above fifty thousand dollars, basically, North Carolina state law requires that you have base everything qualification-based selection. So if we're gonna go out and we're going to, say, design a park. And we anticipate the costs are gonna be more than fifty thousand dollars, we have to put that out as a request for qualifications. And we have to get qualification packages from the architect, landscape architect or engineer. Who provide their qualifications, select based on that, then we negotiate a contracted price. So that's how that works. And so the, the state limit's fifty thousand dollars, um, and what you'll see here is, I believe. Um, you have, uh, Peter's, uh, suggesting a limit for the town of up to twenty thousand dollars. That he could actually execute, uh, contracts for the service. Anything above that. Still after, uh, the fifty thousand dollar Mini Brooks Act would still apply, but basically you're saying.
Well, one of this, there's a section that follows that authorizes the town manager to follow those provisions if. The project will be less than or equal to twenty-five thousand. What this suggests is we, we, we would apply the Mini Brooks exemption, not at fifty, but at twenty-five. And if it's at twenty or less, we would also, uh, execute the contract.
Basically, we're saying, yeah, qualification. Twenty-five thousand. Any questions on that?
That's a good question, uh.
A couple times.
Yeah.
Me, it just sounds like rural Spencer don't need all this. I mean, hard to jeopardize. Not trying to. Know me, limit. Think we're elected.
And that's fine if you want to talk about the. I do think operate on the concept of ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars, yeah.
But it's not. That's what, that's what.
I understand that. I understand. The fifty thousand dollars of this town, you're talking, that's funny.
Yeah, and I think the fifty thousand dollars, there's an A, that's referring to something. Doesn't have to come back. If we want to say it's something less than that. Twice, I guess, budgeted.
I think the, I think the, um, to, um, you know, if you add them all up. You know, likelihood of all of it coming up, but I mean, if you add it all together, two hundred and ten thousand dollars, that's seven percent of our annual operating. My dad used to say a couple of hundred thousand here, a couple of hundred thousand dollars there, and before long, you're talking about a lot of money.
So what, what would you, as a board?
What can you work with?
I serve at your pleasure.
No, that's not a good answer.
No, I, I, well, I, I've recommended these numbers because I, I thought they were appropriate, uh, given our budget. Just to let you know, uh, the, the model for this resolution came from my previous employer where. Uh, and I don't remember all the numbers, but they were, they were much higher, I believe. And there were cases where the limit had been ninety, ninety thousand on this, uh, but. These numbers, I thought, covered the scope of things that were more of a routine nature, uh, versus. versus the things that due to either the purchasing thresholds or others that wouldn't be appropriate for this sort of process. But there's a concern over construction contracts at fifty thousand and we prefer that to be twenty-five thousand, I have no issue with that.
Yes, this board comfortably take all of value.
Cut them in half. They, at the bottom. Twenty-five thousand, item. Ten thousand, right. Ten thousand. Twenty thousand. I would recommend item. Perhaps. Item. Item. Down. And I would suggest items. Setting an upper.
I don't know, gee, what are we talking about? Purchased apparatus, supplies, materials or equipment for purchase. What's that, what, talking about buying?
So for example, if we, if we budget to purchase a, a vehicle that's gonna cost us thirty thousand dollars, it's in the budget. That would allow us to go through the procurement process, find the best price, and, and then cure that without necessarily bringing a contract back, which I don't know historically if, I don't know historically what that's looked like with purchasing a pickup truck here, if those have this, you know, at, but that's, that's what that's talking about.
Yeah, I think historically, we budgeted for it some actual purchase comeback.
So the, the purchasing laws basically split procurement into either construction, qualification-based services, professional services, maintenance contracts, and then everything else is apparatus supplies, you know, the tangible things, a desk, those types of things that need to use for equipment.
The other thing I don't like is. Quarterly. Are you, are we talking about things that are already in the budget? Everything's already in the budget.
That provision is referring to the section below about settling claims of a, of a, these that are within these values list. So that, that quarterly reporting is related to that. Now, we're not encountering those with the frequency here that other municipality might. That's, that's what that's referring to.
Just don't want to get blindsided by the, by the community saying, y'all, y'all are spending money and nobody's telling us what it's about. That's my.
And, and that is certainly not the, the goal or what my vision of what this would be. There would still be communication about what we're doing and of course, the financial transparency of our operations. The goal here is to allow the town to operate efficiently and where, where appropriate and where you're comfortable with, establish limits for, for these.
So we'll read about it. It's been done.
Well, I, I think, I think the interesting point here is that all of the money has already been approved to be spent. It's just the procurement process that allows him to go out and actually get what you've told him to go get, not new money. You're not gonna be reading about it in the newspaper, you're gonna have already read about it in the newspaper when you approve the budget.
I think this, I mean, I think it's fine way Peter's already, I don't think we. The amounts, I mean, it's our step. Budget. Not like you're going out and doing something that beyond that.
Rebut? All right, what's the board want? Open for a motion, I'm open for an amended motion. What do you want to do?
I move to adopt resolution twenty-one dash thirty specifying town manager Peter Francis authority related to contracting bidding surplus property settling claims.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. There a second?
I go.
All right, motion by Mr. Morgan, second by Mr. Miller, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Five, all opposed? Right? Motion carries. All right, item twenty-one. Is authorizing the town manager to execute a professional services agreement.
So after listening to the last two items discussed, I'm both impressed and a little intimidated by the amount of knowledge on this issue that our board has. But what we essentially are bringing to the board tonight is we have received qualifications for design services and also professional planning services. We put together a request for qualifications for design services for the park. We received a one hundred thousand dollar grant from Fred and Alice Standback with the general understanding, if not directive, that it would be used to get started with the park. And so our goal is to begin a process of design and community input. One of the things that we need to do in order to qualify for funding from the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, which is a North Carolina fund through the state government, we've actually received Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grants for Standback Forest to pass. One of the things that we need to do is update our comprehensive recreation plan, which was adopted in twenty-fourteen. And so there are a couple of things going on, design for the park and update of that plan. We received a single proposal from Benish, the same team that is, that we have hired or in the process of hiring for the Aitkin River Trailhead design. One of the things that is specific to their proposal that I think is advantageous to the town of Spencer is that the twenty-fourteen Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan was managed and developed by Site Solutions, which is another design firm. Well, Benish and Site Solutions have, through acquisition or merger, all of those folks that worked on our plan in twenty-fourteen are working for Benish now. And so the recommendation is that we approve or authorize town manager to execute a professional services, services agreement with them so that we can proceed with updating the plan and preliminary discussions about the design. And so that, that will be a requirement of the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund to update the plan and also to have public input on the design of the new park and that will be accomplished through this professional services.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morris. Little bit of additional background for our new board member. From the, Mr. Mohammed, the previous time on the board. The, the park we're talking about is the Park Plaza Park at the corner, right out here in front of us. And basically, we had a design for that park that was designed as part of this facility. And was a relatively modern design. And ultimately, the price of that was prohibitive for us to project this facility. I think the price tag that we ended up getting to, estimated at about a million dollars. So it was cut out, but of course, we made a commitment, we moved forward with a park of some sort. So that's where we're at right now. We've been very, very fortunate to have a private gift foundation, Carolinas, Fred and Alice, Fred and why Alice Standback and their foundation. Because they really want to see us forward with, with some sort of green space out here. So they have no, no, I think, interest in exactly what that looks like. What, what all of us really want to know is what is our, that, like, so that's part of the reason for the input, the public input, but also with the comprehensive plan, getting input on that as well, public input is a critical component. So before we start designing it, I recognize we are redesigning, but we have to redesign to the price point for. And so as we do that, we want to hear from the community, what they want in the park, what they, how are they gonna, and for events, so you know, how is Winterfest gonna be able to interface with them? How can we make sure that it's also an asset for folks to want to come over here perhaps and have a big lunch, constantly like that? So we need to know from our community what it is for the park. And then Benish would design the park accordingly. So that's what this is covering. And at that point, we'll.
So a Turkish bath now says, oh.
You can pay for it, it's yours.
Put your name on it, Sam.
Well, with Winterfest behind us, one thing the park needs to have is available electricity, available water. I don't know if that would include public restrooms or what.
Right.
So I'm sure that, you know, once we get this thing rolling, you're gonna get a lot of input from everybody.
So when I was here on December third, when we had the ribbon cutting, it was abundantly clear to me that one of the fundamental things we need to instruct the design team to consider is the way that the Winterfest project is being implemented. It's almost like you need to take the floor plan for Winterfest and lay it down and then design a park that accommodates all of those, those functions and maybe it improves on. And so it's, that, that would absolutely criteria designs to consider.
The other piece to consider are the other events that we planned.
Exactly.
Current ones and potential future ones. Other piece of that, you know, we talked about a potential food for farmers market, how that space could be used for that. Ideally, if you're gonna make this investment, you want it to be around for events and then also by community members that want to.
Want to have events.
Yeah.
And that was the whole purpose, to get this thing going so that people would know that it, it's not just us that can hold events out there, it's people within our community that would like to put on certain types of events.
And so that's one of the, the major points of emphasis with Parks and Recreation Trust Fund is that there's community input, so it's not limited to just a very few people participating in the design decisions. And specifically, as part of that, the criteria for that grant application is to ensure that there are at least three recreational components within the design of the park. And you could have performance space, for example, you could have active recreation, which could be playground, or you could have nature study, which would be landscaping trees. And so there, we would try to build all of those activities into a multi-use park that would serve. And so we, I, I think this is a logical first step for this group. My understanding is that the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund applications will be taken in May, so we need to get started. And so there, there was a budget adopted just a few weeks ago and I think, based on the criteria last year, I think you could qualify for up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's a matching fund situation, but again, that's, this, tonight starts that, so.
But between this and the cog, of course, we're gonna have a lot of.
That's what we want.
Yep.
Well, see, that's yet to be determined because the, the request for qualifications is based on qualifications. They didn't actually provide a, you know, a proposal for the services, that would be sort of a next step, that they would submit to us an estimate of what it would cost. And, and the, the short answer is that in, in working through contacts with Mr. Standback, he understands that there are necessary things that have to be done in order to leverage funds from Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, for example, and he's open to that. So that's, that's something to take advantage of.
Typically planned. Project.
Right, and I, and I think the community input's gonna really drive how much the park, you know, could potentially cause.
Any other question? All right, is there a motion to authorize the town manager to execute professional services?
Let, don't move.
All right, motion and a second. Favor? Right, opposed? That is approved unanimously. And, Morris? Next, we're gonna be considering authorizing the town manager to accept a ten thousand dollar grant award from the Salisbury Ruann Community Foundation for our work with the Aitkin River Trailhead project at, at, at the river.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it was in September that the Board of Alderman approved or authorized staff to apply for the funds. And so we submitted an application to the Salisbury Ruann Community Foundation. We received notification last week, or ten days ago perhaps, that we had been awarded ten thousand dollars from that particular foundation. That will be applied for the grant consultation with the town manager. He wanted the board to be made aware of that and to give you the opportunity to authorize the staff to accept.
Are there questions?
Uh, no, the Salisbury Ruann Community Foundation is a combination of small, small, significant donors who have pulled together for projects in Salisbury and Ruann County. It used to be called the Salisbury Community Foundation, expanded to include all of, of Ruann County. I don't know the magnitude of the foundation or how many grants they will award this year, but that is a, that's sort of the upper end of their typical award is a ten thousand dollar grant, so. They, they process it, yes, ma'am, they, they.
The foundation for the Carolinas, you know, they manage a variety. They're a foundation.
They, they have a, probably a billion dollars in, you know, that they manage, it's a lot of money. It's a lot of money.
Other question?
Yes.
Are we still on board?
So I have two outstanding grants that I'm receiving official notification on. We'll hear from the Carolinas Red Trail officially very soon and then probably not, will not hear from the, the recreational trail program grant until January. I was explaining to folks on the staff today that the state government adopted the budget in late November and so they've been spending the last few weeks giving Christmas presents to everybody. And so hopefully we'll be in that line. And so we'll just see, I don't know, I mean.
So you're, you're basically waiting on these grants.
Right, but, but let me, let me mention, we have enough money to get started. let me mention, we have enough money to get started.
I know you do. And you had it subdivided into different stages.
Right. So so the short answer is yes. I mean, I think we should be shooting for like a March groundbreaking to succeed. And it, depending on the outcome of maybe one more grant that we need to hear from, we'll know exactly how much we can do in that that initial construction project.
And I think, yeah, that was part of it, right? Trying to bring as much forward into phase from an economy.
I understand.
I I think there's a way that we can probably build in sort of a, not a contingency, but a, an alternate or, you know, something that would sort of push us past the last $100,000.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to accept? So there is a motion from Mr. Mohammed. There are second. Second by Ms. Sledge. All in favor? Approve. That is approved. All right. And the final action item is to consider amending the financial audit contract agreement, attachment seven. Peter, we'll turn it over to you.
Mayor, members of the board, this is a request to extend the audit contract through December 31st. As we have a new auditor this year, the deadline of October 31st. They unfortunately have not met that one, and this is a document that the LGC would like us to execute and submit to do that. My understanding is they they will be meeting this this deadline of December 31st. That is the request before you.
What's been the dialogue with the LGC regarding that? They basically are okay with this, assuming they can provide this?
Yes. Yeah, I haven't heard of any any issues. This is more of a procedural requirement.
And how are we, did the LGC reach out to us about this, or didn't he reach out to them?
I believe the auditor provided this, Mr. Softley.
All right. Other questions? All right. Hearing none. There are a motion to end audit contract for the extension of time from an original due date of October 31st, 2021, to a modified due date of December 31st. Okay. Motion by Ms. Sledge. There are second. Second by Mayor Protim. Further discussion? All in favor? Right. Approve. That is approved unanimously. All right. Thank you very much. With that, we have reached requests and comments by the mayor and board members. So we'll go around and see if there are any updates from each of our board members. This is a great time to provide updates on any of the external committees you're involved with or representation you have on various things like council of government, like that. So we will begin with this.
Good, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Chamber of Commerce after hours yesterday evening and had multiple people tell me how much they were impressed with both Winterfest and with the open house that was built here for the new facility. Everybody's just raved about it. So I was very pleased to hear that, particularly their interest in coming back to Winterfest in the future. One of the other things that has been mentioned by some staff we've been working with is the possibility of keeping that basement over there to us available as an event center. So if that's something we can consider. It seemed like it might be possible. I kept reminding them when they kept talking about next year, next year, next year for Winterfest, that there is going to be a park out there. Remember that. There is going to be a park out there. How far you think you can think of?
All right. What? Mr. Mohammed? Glad to have you. All right. We'll go down to Mr. Miller.
I'd like to say a few comments. Pride is Spencer. Spencer pride. You know, last two weekends, we've been outside our town and also outside the county, inside the county, telling us how proud Spencer and Town Hall and everything. That's great. But I like to stress that we need to encourage, be proud of more than 20 years. Being an outsider up to two years ago, I didn't realize for the staff there are very dedicated individuals. Feel proud of them. One of the things we need to recognize is several people that volunteered to be on groups. That's the way to be involved in our community. That's one, one of the things we need to need to get more people involved in be more active in our community. And we need to support our businesses. That's what keeps the town running because if we don't have that money to defend the town, we are not going to be able to operate. We want bigger and better things. We have better ideas. We do need people to support our community and business. Like I said, I think it's great that we have a lot of dedication whether they're in the fire department, police department, whatever. Like I said, I'm real proud of everyone on the board. I'd like to see more.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Morgan?
To add what Steve said about Winterfest, again, this was a dream of mine two years ago when I asked the board to get, allow me or give me the permission to head up an events committee to try to bring back the events that we had lost over the years and bring some pride and camaraderie back into our neighborhoods. And we started out with a couple of cruise ends and then with Winterfest. And I think if you talked with anyone, the main thing that they said by attending, especially Winterfest, was the fact that they hadn't seen that many smiling faces in a long, long time in this area. And that's, to me, that was, that was worth all of the time and effort it went in to pull this thing off. I hope that it becomes an annual event. But I also want to not spread, spread events thinly, but I think there's other things too that we can focus on. We lost so many events over the years, our Labor Day celebrations, our Fourth of July celebrations, our street dances, a lot of things. They just disappeared as as the businesses went away and our service organizations have suffered as well. Given the times and and the calamities that we face, it seems like on a daily basis. But I hope there are at least a few people out there in the audience listening or watching that become involved again in our town. That's what it's all about, is trying to bring us all together so that we can capitalize on our friendships and grow our businesses and help our town over this hurdle. We've really been stuck on roughly 3,300 people in our community for a long, long time. I would like to see Spencer grow a little bit. I still want it to retain its small-town charm. But I would, I would hope that people start taking an interest in their properties and taking interest in contributing and getting involved with with the town. And I'm hoping that this is a start.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Howe?
Sure. Thank you. Three very quick comments. Number one, as Mr. Mohammed said, I'm thrilled to be here, be on the board. And I hope over the next two years that you feel the same about me as I feel about being here and doing this. And number two, you know, to piggyback on everything Spencer said about Winterfest, I think that was really, really interesting having not been a part of the planning and basically coming in, you know, in fresh blood, so to say, is that it was done in conjunction and in connection with what Rain Museum was doing. As we know, brings lots and lots of people to downtown. I thought it was really neat for the people who are, maybe you're not familiar with Spencer, who came in and saw this grand event occurring right across the street and said, oh, wow, this is really neat. I want to come back or I want to walk over there. I thought that was using an asset that we all know we have to enhance an asset that maybe we're trying to rebuild or replace or, so I thought that was really cool. The third thing, and this may be procedurally the wrong time, so if I'm out of order, please stop me.
I'll let you now. And if I don't, Pat will.
I I realize that we're all, there's lots and lots of things going on, and I don't want it to be a drag. But but I mentioned it many, many times in run-up to this, and I feel like I'd be remiss if I didn't mention it right here and right now. I would really like either before the board or before the town or in some mechanism that the property owners of the old finishing company come before this board and explain what is going on out there and when it's going. I realize we can't subpoena them or anything like that. It's voluntary. But Waterford Funding LLC, I think one is local. One of the other individuals is not. I'd love to hear what their plans are. If not now, then when?
So I'll be happy to catch you up on it.
Okay, okay.
Yep, yep.
Excellent.
So part of it too, that site is also in the site readiness program.
Excellent.
And so they're working to do that. We'll catch you up on it.
Sure.
Everything the board's been privy to thus far.
Excellent. Great. That's wonderful.
Yep. There is progress.
Good. Excellent. Excellent.
Not not fast, but there's progress. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Howe. I'll echo your your sentiments about Winterfest. It was a great event. The the sight of people showing up in pajamas was a very, very welcome sight because that meant that they were coming across the street from the Polar Express. Peter and I actually had an opportunity to meet a family from, they had come up from Myrtle Beach. They were originally from New Jersey, and apparently they had done something similar up there and had very bad things to say about the event up there with the Polar Express, but just talked about how great they thought this was. But they were so excited also to be able to participate in Winterfest, so much so that their younger daughters were both begging to come back from Myrtle Beach the following week for Winterfest. Pretty neat stuff.
Good.
Anyway, a couple of updates. I, last Friday, had an opportunity to participate virtually since I was out of town at the quarterly mayor's roundtable for the county that the Rowan Chamber puts on. And that was a great time to be able to talk with our fellow mayors, our state and federal representatives and liaisons, and also our our county commission chair. And so a lot of positive things are happening in Rowan County right now, a lot of development. But what I will say is in talking and hearing the things, I would say that Spencer is right up there with every other municipality, if not making even greater strides with some of the things that you're doing. But there's a lot to be proud of right now with the work that our staff and our community and this board is doing. The other thing that I will say is we got a lot of kudos for our new Town Hall. I think there are a lot of, right now, we're the envy of some of some other municipalities for for design tips for their facilities. So we had a really good turnout for those that were able to come to the open house, those that weren't. We had a lot of folks from around, elected officials and things like that from others. We had probably over 80 people. Is that about right? I think it was.
There was, there was a lot of people here.
There were a lot of people. It was great. The other thing that I want to bring up is our strategic planning session. I would like for us to go ahead because it's going to take some time for both Peter and I to work together and plan that. So I would like for us to kind of target when we would like to do that. My preference would be sometime in early February. I think that's reasonable. But if we can look at maybe targeting a date, I would suggest that we do it here in our new space. But Peter, I don't know if you had any thoughts on kind of timing or specific dates or anything like that?
No, although, you know, I think that's the timeframe we we used last year. After doing that timing last year and I I might suggest maybe a little later as it relates to some of the information we get for I guess I'll say this, I think that would be good timing so long as we don't want to talk too much about revenue projection. Because I thought we might be able to do that more than we did at that, at this time last year.
Well, and and that's one of the things that I would suggest we do our strategic planning workshop. It's more of a vision process, especially with two new board members, kind of setting the the stage for board goals and that sort of thing early on in the new calendar year. Then to actually have our budgeting kind of workshop once we have revenue.
Sure.
Does that seem reasonable? So it's early February. Does that work for everybody? Okay. So that being the case.
What I'll, I know there's just to, just to put this out there and try to eliminate a conflict, the State Managers Association Conference is in early February. It is in, you know, between the first, that those first few days of February, that between the first and the fourth. So which actually are, I think, our pre-agenda that month will be on Thursday, the 3rd.
Yeah, that's right.
I wonder if, you know, a Friday session like Friday, the 11th might be a good
Celebrate my birthday. I don't want to celebrate that birthday. It's a big one. Better than the alternative. Okay. Well, how about that? What if we schedule it for February, the 11th? That work?
11th, 18th, I mean, those Fridays, you're, you know, if that, if, I don't know, I guess that's the, that's the conversation we need to hear about with a day-long Friday session.
Typically, we schedule it for a day-long event. So we've just got to kind of be cognizant of that. I know we've got several folks here, including myself, who work and work their own work schedules to make that happen.
When's our pre-agenda?
No, it's the 3rd. It's the week before. It happened real early because the 1st is on a busy day. That generally work for everybody? Why don't we do this? Why don't we tentatively plan for the 11th? And then at our January meeting, we confirm that up. Go ahead and check your schedules. Make sure that you need to take off that day, that you get off. And we'll go from there. Okay? All right. That is all that I have. And so with that, I guess I do have a request to go into executive session briefly for the purpose of personnel, if there is a motion, so.
I'm moved to go into executive session.
There's a motion by Ms. Sledge. Is there a second? Second by Mayor Protim. All in favor? All opposed. I don't know if you're opposed or not. It was just slow. All right. So we are now in closed session. Take a brief break.